Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, March 28, 2021, excuse me, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Let the record reflect that all city councilors are present. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Counselors' recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.)
Thank you very much. Under General this evening, we have several items that are on the agenda. And the first up is the recognition of Eagle Scout Will Berry. And first up, I'd like to defer a little bit to Counselor Hatch, who will have some brief words.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. For those of you who don't know, the Boy Scout organization has been in existence since 1912. And between 1912 and 2019, over 2.5 million scouts have earned the Eagle Scout rank. In 2019, about 8% of all scouts earned that Eagle Scout rank. It's a very, very select group. Earning the rank of Eagle Scout is a long journey, requiring dedication and discipline over many years. For a young person, it can be a very formative, character-building experience that provides a lifetime of valuable benefits. Now, to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a scout must do a number of things. Successfully advance through the six preceding ranks of scouting, earn a minimum of 21 merit badges, including a citizenship and community badge, serve six months in a position of responsibility, plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a service project, participate in a Scout Master Conference, and then successfully complete their Board of Review for the Eagle Scout rank. For those who successfully achieve the rank of Eagle Scout, it's a major milestone accomplishment in their young life. On March 12, City Administrator Kainrath and I were fortunate to represent the city of Saco by attending Will Berry's Eagle Scout Court of Honor ceremony, where he was officially awarded his Eagle Scout rank. Will and his family are my neighbors. I am also their Ward Five Counselor. I first met Will when I greeted him at the front door of my home several years ago. He was dressed in his full Boy Scout uniform. We connected immediately on two levels. First, unbeknownst to Will, I have a very warm, respectful spot in my heart for Boy Scouts. My dad was a Boy Scout leader for approximately two decades. Second, and my family can attest to the fact, I have a passion for eating popcorn. And Will was determined to sell me some. And needless to say, he was very successful. So, Will, as I said at your ceremony, many around you are justifiably proud of your Eagle Scout achievement. I want you to know that circle of pride includes the city of Saco. So, Will, will you come up and say a few words for us? And please welcome our newest Eagle Scout.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Thank you for having me here tonight. Oh, there we go. To celebrate the completion of a longtime goal of mine, I've wanted to be an Eagle Scout since 2010, when I joined PAC 311 as a Tiger Cub. It's a goal that's been nine years in thought and almost two years in planning and execution. My Eagle Scout project, the Flag Depositories, was approved in November of 2019 with an estimated timetable for completion in late spring of 2020, early summer tops. This is obviously thrown out of whack by the widespread effects of the COVID-19 pandemic in March of that year. So, over the summer, I organized multiple build days following the CDC-recommended safety guidelines. In this time, we saw the construction of two wooden flag boxes, and by July of 2021, all four boxes were fabricated and painted. The last challenge was delivery, and this may have been the most complicated part. One of the boxes that I had was planned to be delivered to the Saco Transfer Station. I didn't know who to reach out to for approval. I mean, I, at the time, I didn't really have a good connection to the city of Saco. However, I did have an old friend of mine who used to work here, and he directed me to Mr. Travis Moore, the Deputy Director of Public Works. Mr. Moore gave his seal of approval for the project. He was, he was really excited about it. And so, I have to say thank you to that. And then, my father and I went to drop the box off, and Mr. Rob Lamar was the attendant at the time of the transfer station, and he helped me figure out the best spot for the box. It's in the light bulb shed there. You guys know where I'm talking about? Perfect. So, I'm grateful for his help as well. The locations of all four boxes can be found throughout Saco and Old Orchard Beach. For the specific locations, you can visit troop310saco.com/flag-etiquette. While, while there, you can also find more details about why and how flags are retired properly. Lastly, many people here can attest to how scouting has shaped my life for the better. So, I recommend to all parents here, take your kids to a scout meeting. Get them involved in the program. They will learn a lot. For more info and to find a scout pack or troop near you, go to beascout.org. Thank you, Counselor Hatch, for inviting me. It's been an honor to speak to all of you tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
On behalf of the City of Saco, Office of the Mayor, here's a proclamation honoring Will Berry for his promotion to Eagle Scout. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America has a history of more than 100 years of helping to shape and mold the values and characters of youth, whereas the Boy Scouts of America continues to help strengthen youth families and communities; whereas the Boy Scouts of America encourages its adult and youth members to live in the worldwide principles of the organization, including duty to God and respect for individual beliefs, loyalty to one's country and respect for its laws, strength of world friendship and scouting brotherhood, service to others, community development, and universal regard for the scout promise and life as a life guide, excuse me, and law as a life guide. Whereas a ceremony of honor was held to celebrate William Berry, Boy Scout Troop 310, for attending the, attending the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Will's Eagle Scout project was dedicated to improving the task of retiring American flags. In recognition of his achievement, now therefore I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, do hereby express my best wishes and congratulations to Will Berry as he embarks on new adventures in the days ahead, given under my hand the seal of the city of Saco on the 28th day of March 2022. Congratulations, Will Berry. The Thornton Academy Boys Varsity Hockey Team. The team had a great season, made it to the Maine State Hockey Class A Championships. Four TA hockey players were selected to represent Thornton Academy in Maine High School Hockey Class A Southern Team in the 2022 Senior All-Star Game. Cody Billidoo, Alex St. John, Gage Tarbox Belanger, and Roman Corsetti made Saco and TA proud. We commend this team and the players and the coaches for their hard work, great sportsmanship, and determination. You have made Saco proud. Congratulations to the Thornton Academy Boys Varsity Hockey Team. Also related to Thornton Academy, I had the great honor and privilege to return to TA to attend the ring ceremony for the championship teams of 2021, the varsity and freshman teams who won the state championships in 2001. And their ring ceremony, they invited me to speak, so it was a great honor to speak at my former high school, to go through that. And they, the ceremony was well, well-attended by many, and it was just a great honor to watch them receive their rings and actually see a ring ceremony in person. So, congratulations to the Thornton Academy Varsity and Freshmen Football Teams for their Class A state championships. Some more good news this evening. I'd like to highlight that Holly Trotier and Danielle Pelletier, both Burns teachers, are two finalists in the Excellence in Math and Science Teaching Awards. So, we wish them the best and say congratulations to them and their achievements in the education of math and science. And now, at this moment, I would like to talk about Item C, Elm Street Construction Notification. I believe we're going to have Director Fox come up and talk about traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No one can put a damper on this uplifting meeting, like the Public Works Director, to coming, coming up to the podium to tell you, we have some emergency sewer work that has to happen at the intersection of North Street and Elm Street, or North Street and Route 1. We've looked for every possible way to avoid this over the last probably 10 or 15 years, but this is an old brick line that services a very large section of our city. It's over 100 years old. So, we just ask, this was the last public meeting, to at least bring it up. There'll be postings of detour routes on the website and Facebook page and going out to all major news outlets. It will start Monday, April 4, the morning of April 4. We say through the 11th. I sure hope we are not out there that long, but we're getting into some, some old utilities that take a lot of care and attention to work around. So, there'll be day and night work involved, and it's not something that we can open back up during the day. So, Main Street and Scammon Street will be the detours for most traffic. It'll all be signed, and we'll get it done as quickly as we can. Look for more notification on that.
Thank you for lightening the mood. With that, that brings us to conclusion of General and item, and on to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this evening? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a report from the Benefit of Saco, Old Orchard Beach Transit Committee, which met last Thursday. Couple of items, the Transit Authority has received delivery of two new electric buses. They are currently training drivers and other staff on the utilization of those buses. They expect that that training will carry them into April and in May of this year and then launching at some point. We will also see scheduled field chargers are being, are being installed at the Saco Transportation Center, and that is on target to be done in September, October. It's important to note that the electric buses aren't necessarily a cost-savings measure because electric rates, as we know, are quite high, but it does accomplish a very important issue, and that's our environmental carbon footprint will get reduced. So, we're looking forward to seeing those two new buses on, on the bus routes soon. Thank you, Mayor Doyle.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondents to council? Moving on to Item 6, and that is public comment. We have some folks that have signed up. First up is Jane Karen. We remind all public comments to keep, try and keep it to three minutes and speak directly into the microphone. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I am commenting concerning Consent Items, Consent Item B. I am disappointed that Peter Scontras is not on this agenda, appointed to City Historian. Although Anatole Brown's resume is impressive, and I appreciate his work, I mean no disrespect to him, I believe that it is, is it my disappointment for certain, and I think for the city, that Peter Scontras is not the first city historian for Saco Maine.
Thank you. Up next is Rick Millard.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me. I believe there's, excuse me, Rick Millard, 26 Lorbitro, Saco. I believe there are shortcomings with the existing comprehensive plan. It completely ignores tourism. Now, tourism in this area is, while tourism in the state of Maine is the second-largest industry, tourists of all over New England come here, New England, New York, Canada, they come here, and they come here for our beaches. And while they're here, they spend $250 million every year. Now, the bulk of that goes to Old Orchard, of course, but little is being done by the city of Saco to tap that revenue stream. There's no economic, there's no beach, coastal, city-level economic development in the plan that's directed at tourism. There's nothing as far as developing additional restaurants, seasonal beach, recreational beaches, businesses that are needed, and our low-hanging fruit for this area, they're only down the street. All you gotta do is pull a little bit, and they'll come. And as a matter of fact, we've gone from two restaurants to maybe one. We've gone to a souvenir shop that is gone, no ice cream shop, and no general store. So, things are really moving in the wrong direction, but there's no effort to change We need to rebuild our beaches, and right now, we're relying on federal agencies, who are not reliable in their timing, to put sand on our beaches so that we can attract additional During the summers, the beaches require a little maintenance. When we get a storm and there's seaweed on the beach, it is a major detractor for, for tourism. We really need to clean the beaches during the summer. It's not overly complicated. All we have to do is look at Old Orchard, they're doing it already. The beaches pay the highest property value, property taxes in the city, yet I don't see them getting very much for their money. They have a reduced demand for services over the winter months. So, and we have, during the summer months, we have some major parking and safety issues on Route 9 in Kenny Shores and in Bayview. The city has two paid parking lots. One of them is in Camp Ellis, the other one is in Bayview. They both do very well during the summer, adding money to the city coffers. Both should be expanded, and additional parking should be provided in the, in the Kenny Shores area. I would really like to see tourism acknowledged and actually quantified as far as the city of Saco is concerned. We need to include both the seasonal as well as short-term vacationers. I'd like to see more tourist, I'd like to see some tourist-related economic development in the city's plan. I'd like to see beach involvement, maintenance be moved to a proactive activity rather than defensive, and the parking that I mentioned. Thank you very much. If you require a hard copy, I will provide my comments to Senator, Councilman Berman after this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Kelly Archer.
On a side note, Inka is very ill, who is watching and will follow up with all of you. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. As you all know, I research, audio, video, documents, I inquire, or I'm a witness to the events I speak of. It is unbelievable that I am witnessing this mayor's absolute petty refusal to nominate Peter Scontras as historian. It is common knowledge throughout the city that this position was created in 2020 to entice Peter off the planning board. You knew he would jump on that, at that opportunity. For you, Mr. Mayor, or any counselor, to state anything different is morally wrong and untruthful. During those six months from council discussion in September 20 to establishment on March 1, 21, Peter was very excited, prepared, and spoke of it often. It was witnessed by many people, planning board, HPC, elected and staff officials, and citizens, with the expectation that you would nominate Peter after codification. Counselor Johnston, as the Planning Board Liaison in the fall of 20, you were a witness to those conversations. Counselor Miffale, as Planning Board Liaison from January to March 2021, Peter's remaining term, you too were a witness. Counselor Gunn, as HPC Liaison, you were a witness to commissioners' conversations of how this historian position with Peter's curriculum would meld into our projects. Counselor Hatch, as a citizen in the fall of 2020, you witnessed some of Peter's outbursts and his apologies during the rough process of Planning Board Zora's Flatley meetings, and you knew of certain elected officials attempting to remove Peter by such enticement. To Counselors Archer, Purdy, Berman, and Mr. Kainrath, it is my personal belief that you know or heard it was this mayor's strategy to create this position because of and for Peter. And, Mr. Mayor, during January 30, 30, 2021, Flatley Sidewalk, Peter interrupted your conversation in the parking lot with Joyce Leary-Clark, stating he would not be seeking Planning Board reappointment as his term ended April 1, upon which Joyce replied, "Is that why you called so-and-so?" Peter was making it easier for you by paving the way for the upcoming council codification, which also happened to be April 1. He was excited that the appointment was forthcoming after his last Planning Board meeting on March 30. Peter had complete faith in you. He trusted your word. And then, on March 2, 2022, a year later, I emailed the council to fill this position with Peter, received a legal opinion, and just this past week, you nominated someone else. Did you provide full disclosure, the backstory, to Leslie and Anatole prior to her recommendation and his acceptance? Or are they too being blindsided? Your actions are so wrong on so many levels. How dare you hurt this man's dreams? No leader would do that, what you have done to him or us. Shame on you, as it is now quite evident, you never had any intention to nominating Peter as historian. It was just to get him off the planning board. And for any counselor to consider any approval of anyone but Peter as historian would be a stain upon this city. Do not be complicit. Your integrity and honor are on the line. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak that did not sign up, please come forward.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if I was going to speak. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for calling me this evening just before 5 o'clock, and we talked for 45 minutes.
Peter, can you just put your name and address into the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. Peter N. Scontras, 6 West Ward Lane, Saco Maine, 04072-1943. Thank you for calling me just before 5 o'clock today, and we talked for 45 minutes. We both talked candidly and openly, and I appreciate that very much. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but there were, there were two people with whom I, who have knowledge of me in a professional setting. One is Joyce Leary-Clark, and I asked Joyce what she thought, and she said she was shocked. I said, "Well, a lot of people are," but she said, "I want to write a letter to the council." I think she did it this afternoon, but I'm not sure if you received it. So, I'd like to read it, and that's all I want to say. I'm sorry. Sean Nicholas also, I think, wrote something. Well, Joyce said, "While reviewing the agenda for tonight's city council's meeting, I was shocked to see that someone other than Peter Scontras was being nominated for the position of city historian. While I mean no offense to Anatole Brown," and I must add, I don't mean offense to Anatole Brown either, please. "I believe that Peter Scontras is eminently qualified for the position of city historian. In addition to writing books about Saco history, Peter has served in multiple capacities over the years, from Planning Board and zoning ordinance review to Conservation Commission, Harbour Commission, Saco Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, et cetera, et cetera. A lifelong resident of Saco, Peter is also perfectly suited to serve as city historian based on his career as an educator, having taught English to Saco middle schoolers for decades. Our family personally witnessed Peter's devotion to Saco history while he was writing Saco Then and Now. As my mother, Edna Leary, who read the text for Peter, and my father, Jim Leary, provided photos and postcards for inclusion in the book. Now retired, Peter has the time and inclination to devote as much time as needed to the job of city historian. In fact, it is my understanding that Peter declined to be renominated for another term in the planning board last spring so that he would be available for the position of city historian. In short, I can't think of anyone who is more qualified for the role of Saco city historian than Peter Scontras, and would strongly urge the council to appoint him. Joyce Leary-Clark, Ex Esquire." I like to just talk very briefly about one thing that the mayor and I talked about this afternoon, and I mentioned in my remarks to you last Monday that, and I apologize for my behavior when I was on the planning board, and not my ideas or thoughts, because they're, they're legitimate, but I had a difficult time being patient and talking too loud and maybe saying some, some things that I maybe should have not said. All I can tell you, and it is my own personal experience, all I can tell you is that that was a very difficult time in my life. My wife, Bridget, son Nicky, my wife Bridget has Parkinson, she came down with Parkinson's disease. My son Nicky has diabetes. He, his organs and functions and systems inside are deteriorating and disintegrating. He's a cancer, we hope, survivor. He's had E. coli, and if you know anything about me and how I am, I pride myself on being a family man, that was extremely difficult situation for me. And my personal physician and I, after I was so desperate to try to think of something because that wasn't me, talked about medication. My wife said, "Don't talk about it," but, "Well, I just want to lay my cards on the table. You can either accept it or not, that's fine." But I would feel better if I did. And that is that in order to help me to function more under control, I, there was some medication, and it wasn't right. It wasn't working. So, I was, I was really desperate because I knew that was wrong. I knew, I knew that that kind of approach was wrong by me. So, we talked, and we changed that, and I can, I can tell you now that I am thrilled. I haven't been as confident or as comfortable in many, many years. And if you look at anything else about my background, anything I've been on, from my teaching to today, I would, I would challenge you to find anywhere where those two terms on the planning board were the norm and not the exception. They were the norm and not the exception. I haven't, I've stayed away since April 1. That was my last day. You haven't seen me. You haven't talked to me. I haven't been to, I haven't been to planning board meetings, although folks call me and would like my take on this measure or that measure, and I haven't offered anything. I'm, there was something coming up though downtown. I'm, there is something coming up, though, downtown that I'm very interested in, but that's done. Last week, I had my 75th birthday, and my family took me out, and thankfully, they brought me back. So I was, it was a nice birthday present. And my concern is that that kind of experience, as it played out back then, is coloring the whole process of the legitimacy of my nomination. And I'm not going to go into my qualifications. You have that. All I can tell you is that that's what happened. That's the truth. You can check on it, and I'm willing and ready to go. I haven't attended any of your meetings or commented. The only places I've commented socially on networks, the Bedford Memory Site, the Saco Memory Site, if you're from Saco Main, if, and you're from, plus some photographs that might have wrong captions, I insert my own corrections in there. But I thought I'd square that because, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for the opportunity of calling me today so that I could relay that, relay that to you directly, but from what we discussed, that seemed to be an issue, and that's all I can say on it. Thank you.
Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive. I'm not going to repeat what folks have said, but, Mr. Mayor, I, just listening to what I just heard, I guess if you had some reservations, I would have hoped you would have addressed them much, much sooner. You gave your word to this gentleman, is my understanding, and what you want to do as a private citizen is one thing, but you did it as a, you know, a representative of the city of Saco. I would hope we keep our word. I've known him for a while. He would do a fantastic job, and again, this is no reflection on Mr. Brown, which I'm sure, I've heard a little bit about him, and he sounds like he's super qualified. Just have a bit of a problem with us not honoring our word, unless it was something that's extraordinary, and I would have hoped it would have been addressed before a late date in being called on somebody 5:00 PM tonight. That's all I get to say. Thank you.
Thank you. There's anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Broschu, 257 Buxton Road. I would like to address the proposed appointment of the City Historian. As you recall, I spoke with the council last meeting in support of Mr. Peter Scontress to be appointed to this position. I failed to make my closing thought due to the three-minute alarm scattering in my mind, which was this: every successful government, I'm sorry, every successful organization, whether private sector, military, or governmental, has to record their successes and failures in order, so that they may be able to reflect back on those from time to time, to minimize costly mistakes and to ensure that they're not repeated when new, younger managers rise into positions of decision-making. This is the priceless value of institutional knowledge within an organization. As we all return home from a meeting such as this and get ready to turn in for the evening, I hope that each one of you can look into a mirror and take pause to reflect on the efforts that you have made through your service to our community, knowing that you have carried out your efforts with dignity, honesty, respect, and transparency, all qualities of good civic leaders. I believe that Mr. Scontress can still do this, even after a lifetime of service to our community. The way this situation has unfolded, creating enticement for a new position, being offered to someone with as much passion for documenting history as Mr. Scontress has, with the presumed consequence of him stepping down from his role as a member of the Planning Board. Now, almost a full year later, in failure to nominate him, and apparently with no intent of making an appointment at all until pressure from citizens and a couple of the counselors, we are here tonight with a different name as a nominee on the agenda. It appears that this may be a bait and switch. Rather than being direct and stating that a certain board member's actions do not align with the vision of a new mayor and simply not reappointing them, we, as the citizens of Saco, get this sort of smoke and mirrors routine. I believe the smoke is now dissipating, and the citizens are watching closely. I hope that the seven counselors with tonight's vote will stand unified, reject the mayor's nominee as a statement that we demand more from our elected leaders. This is in no way a, this is in no way a reflection of the nominee's qualifications or abilities, as I feel he is a casualty of the situation. May the seven counselors tonight stand unified and reject the vote of the mayor's nominee as a sign the city will not stand for such tactics from this leader. As each of you stand, as each of you stand in front of your mirror tonight, I hope you see the face of dignity, honesty, respect, and transparent leadership that have made a sound decision on this matter. Thank you all for your service to the city of Saco.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council, please come forward and be heard.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Johnston.
If there's nobody else, I would like to enter into the record a letter that I received today.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I haven't read it fully, so, nor have I timed it, so I'm not certain if it's three minutes, but I will cruise through it. My name is Sean Nicholas, and I live at 145 Woodman Avenue. I recently became aware that Mr. Scontress was not being appointed to the position of City Historian. I am sending this letter to be read into public comment during this evening's council meeting on March 28th. Unfortunately, I'm unable to attend in person. It was no secret to any of you and hundreds of others, if not thousands, that Mr. Scontress was slated to become the City Historian. He openly shared his intentions when he chose not to seek reappointment to the Saco Planning Board around this time last year. Unlike many of you, I did not have the great fortune of having Mr. Scontress as teacher and mentor while growing up, since I lived in Bedford, but I did have the pleasure and fortune of working with him while on the Saco Planning Board, and for that, I am very thankful and appreciative. Although we didn't always agree, I quickly learned that when Mr. Scontress speaks, his words are worth listening to. He was a man that wore his heart on his sleeves, and that sleeve reads, "Mr. Saco." His love and passion for this great community and all the people in it, we call it home, is evident every time he speaks. His knowledge of the city is second to none. Love, passion, knowledge, respect, commitment, integrity, family man. Those are the words I think of when I think of Mr. Scontress, and those are the words I aspire to be and pray that our city officials aspire to be as well when they are elected or appointed to justly represent our interests. I firmly believe that the original plan of having Mr. Scontress be our next City Historian was the right one. It's a true no-brainer because there is no one more qualified for the city of Saco. It's time for this local treasure and gift to be recognized for what he is and what he has to offer by making his dream and passion come true and making Saco better in doing so. Very few communities are blessed with such a person with his qualifications. Just look at all the hard work and thought and preparation he has already put into it before he had the official title. Like I said, love, passion, knowledge, respect, commitment, integrity, family man. So in closing, I ask that the mayor to consider withdrawal of any appointment to Saco City Historian that doesn't include the name Peter Scontress. I ask the city council to deny any appointment other than Peter Scontress. No disrespect to any other candidates, as I'm sure they may find, they may be fined, but when a once-in-a-lifetime candidate comes before you, you can't look the other way and settle for fine. There's a phrase in my house I use with my children, "Do the right thing." It's a simple phrase, but it can have a powerful impact, and it helps us all to sleep better at night and look at ourselves in the mirror in the morning. Please do the right thing and appoint Mr. Scontress as the new City Historian. Thank you for your time, sincerely and respectfully, Sean W. Nicholas.
Thank you. Any further public comment this evening? Moving on from public comment. Brings us to item 7. There are no minutes to approve. That brings us to item 8. There are two items under item 8, and that is 8A, confirm mayor's appointments to the Conservation Commission of Dale Allen Campbell and Alexandra Courtney. And item B, confirm mayor's appointment of City Historian for Anatole Brown. Is there a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Counselor Gunn, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion or want to remove any items from the consent agenda? Counselor Hatch and then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Hatch?
I'd like to remove item B, please, to action.
Remove item B. So item B will become the new item A under action. Counselor Johnston?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay. So as amended, the consent items improve, includes, excuse me, item 8A and confirm mayor's appointments to Conservation Commission of Dale Allen Campbell and Alexandra Courtney. Any discussion? Roll call vote on the consent agenda as amended. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item 8, and the new item A is confirm mayor's appointment to City Historian for Anatole Brown. That's page 5 in your packet, and that is Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 1st, 2021, the City Council voted to approve a volunteer City Historian position, revising Section 4.13 of the City Code. The City Historian will provide advisory and informational assistance to council, city staff, and boards and commissions, as well as educational outreach for the general public and schools. Staff recommends the appointment of a City Historian. Be it ordered that the City Council confirm the mayor's appointment of Anatole Brown as the City Historian for a term of three years. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Discussion. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I personally am finding the process and the chain of events that's led to this nomination to be extremely disrespectful to both Mr. Scontress and Mr. Brown. As a sitting City Counselor, it's just very disappointing. We all live our lives deciding what ideology will shape our moral compass. I'm not here to judge anybody's moral compass, but I am judging my own. My moral compass has been dramatically affected by three decades of work as a Rotarian. Now Rotary's not a perfect organization, nor am I a perfect human being, but I find strength in the ideals of Rotary, a guide that works us through the things we think, say, or do by answering four meaningful questions. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? For me, the process leading up to this nomination has failed on all four of those questions. I find it interesting, we just recognize the Eagle Scout accomplishments of one of our young citizens. The first of the 12 Scout laws is a scout will be trustworthy, tell the truth, and keep promises so that people can depend on you. In support of will, I believe our part, I believe part of our collective responsibility as municipal officials is to be a shining example of doing what is right. So in closing, I'm going to publicly apologize to Mr. Brown, as I will not be supporting his nomination tonight. It's only because my moral compass is pointing right at Mr. Scontress, and I will be voting no on this action item, because voting yes will give the illusion of my complicity with a process I find so inappropriate and disingenuous on many levels. I would challenge my fellow counselors to take a look at who their moral compass is pointing at as well. Thank you.
Counselor Purdy?
First of all, I'm not privy to the mayor's thoughts. I'm not privy to the mayor's conversations with other folks. Had I heard that Mr. Scontress was a possibility for the City Historian position, I heard it somewhere in the grapevine. I couldn't honestly say where, or when, or from who. And I reject and am frankly offended by the assertion that all the counselors here are privy to everything that has been discussed. I think that what it boils down to for me is this is a mayoral appointment. The wording of the motion that we passed says, "The mayor shall nominate and the council approve." Now, whether this council approves or not remains to be seen, but it is a mayoral appointment. And beyond that, this is, Mr. Brown is who the mayor decided to nominate, and we will take a vote on it. If it fails, then the mayor can nominate someone else. It's as simple as that. That's all I have to say.
You, Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, and yes, I do recognize that the mayor's authority, the power that he has is to appoint and is the council's decision on to whether to accept that appointment or not. For me, this is about Marine Corps values that were taught and instilled in boot camp, and for me, I've lived in them, and it's called honor, courage, and commitment. And for me, this is more about honor. I am aware of what certain individuals had said, that yes, there was that Mr., there was the directive, direction, that Mr. Scontress, once he was off the Planning Board, would become the historian, and for that, I have to operate on behalf of the city in which I have to honor what was originally said. This also happened to me when I was a first new counselor. One of my first voting measures was to accept some amendments to the contract zone at the ecology school, and I was new, I had looked over it, and I, at that time, it was very new, very, yeah, just very new at the time. I made the decision to allow, because I had to honor the commitment that the further past council, the city, had put forward. So my vote, I believe it was a 4-3. I don't, Counselor Johnston and the mayor were present, but it was a very close vote, and for me, I did push it forward because of honor, to honor the commitment that the city gave to the ecology school, and this is how I'm approaching it with Mr. Scontress. So that's why I'll also be voting no, and it's more based on principles of honor. When you say something, you do something, and for that, I'll be voting no. I'll be voting no against any other nominations for this, or appointments for this position, unless it's him. Mr. Brown, I don't know who you are, but I do thank you for the work you do at the Dyer Library. Again, I'll be voting no. The only reason why I won't is if Mr. Peter Scontress says he no longer wants the position, but I'll be voting for, the next time I vote yes for this position will be for him if he's on there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I'm, for once, lost for words, to be honest, or at least words that can be appropriate. I mean, I just think this whole situation is so unfortunate.
I mean, I just think this whole situation is so unfortunate. The creation or the ideas of the city historian originated with Mr. Scontras and the prior mayor. Didn't get done under that administration, it was passed on to Mayor Doyle. Again, as a fellow councillor said, I don't know what conversations occurred or what the mayor is thinking, but I do know that I have knowledge that at least there was a conversation where, you know, I had overheard that Mr. Scontras was told before council even approached the process of creating this code, that it was going to be done so on his behalf. I think at least, again, speaking for myself, I know that when we created this code, it was definitely, I remember speaking at that meeting, I think I actually said, "Mr. Scontras would be perfect for this." I think Counsel McPhail may have said something along those lines too. So they certainly thought, you know, that's where we were going with this. Months went by, I brought it up several times at council, recognizing it was a mayor's appointment, but I just thought maybe, you know, with everything going on, we had forgotten. You know, clearly, sometime this summer when I spoke to Mr. Scontras, I started to realize that perhaps we're going in a different direction. But again, I kind of waited, and, you know, it was several weeks ago when members of the public started coming forward, asking that Mr. Scontras be appointed, that all of a sudden, the mayor decided to go out and find somebody else. And I don't know why. I do agree that it is his right. I don't think it's right, however. I mean, I don't know, I just, I think it's unfortunate that we've sat here and dragged Mr. Scontras through the mud, really, for a year. And, you know, it doesn't sit well with me, but it is what it is. And again, I think my vote in the negative isn't a reflection on Mr. Brown at all. I think he definitely seems qualified. I just, knowing Mr. Scontras, and I just think it's a shame that we do something else, to be honest. So I guess, I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a lot of thoughts on this, and Counselor Johnston's point though, it's a little hard to articulate them in a way that's appropriate considering, I get my emotions up here a little bit, but I'll do my best. I don't know Mr. Scontras, I didn't have the pleasure of having him as a teacher, although I heard plenty of good things though, so I can attest to that, sir. And I don't want to comment or speak to whatever this conduct, whatever that's been alluded to when you were on the planning board. I make it my point to try to stay of the planning board's affairs, that's why we have a planning board, that's why we have a city council, so we have our own prerogatives, and whatever was said and done in there, I mean, it is what it is. I approach this from the simple fact, and this goes, kind of alludes to what Counselor Purdy had mentioned, that the mayor, it is the responsibility of a mayor to nominate positions to be filled, and it's the responsibility of the council to fill those positions. Now, Mr. Scontras coming here last week, and everybody in support of him saying that it's been promised in no shorter terms, well, unless you have the receipts to prove to me that it was, and I also reject Ms. Archer's accusation that I was privy to something that I was not privy to, that's a lie, and I will call it a lie for what it is. When I sat here a year ago and agreed to this position, I didn't know any of these particular people that were, you know, being considered for it. However, at the end of the day, the mayor, let's just say it's, let's just say it's a difference of opinion, and the mayor did promise Peter Scontras this position, well, guess what? Mayor doesn't have the ability to promise anyone anything. The mayor nominates and the council makes the decision. The mayor cannot speak on behalf of this council to approve anyone for any position. That is our prerogative as councillors, and it's a prerogative that I defend, because that's the reason we have a council, and not just Diamond Joe Quimby up here liking The Simpsons and just a group of citizens, the loudest and the meanest that can dictate city policy. We don't have a town hall form of government, we have a council manager form of government. You entrust us to make these decisions on your behalf, and if you don't like them, you wait until the next election, you go out, you get your 35 signatures, you get on a ballot, you sit behind this table, and you actually have access to all the information we do, and you can actually make these decisions based on rationality, what's best for the city, and not just who's the loudest in the room, or who's going to axe to grind against the mayor because they feel they were disrespected at some point, or have an axe against the mayor because they hate the ecology school for God knows what reason, they want to see it run out of town. That's not how we do business in Saco, and it's not how we do appointments in Saco. Like I said, I don't know Mr. Scontras personally, but frankly, I feel he's being used. I feel he's being used by people that just want to stick it to this mayor because a new mayor came along, has some new ideas, and they just can't stand it. Well, guess what? He's got two more years left in his term, and he was given a mandate by the city. If you don't like it, get your candidate, and get candidates for council, support him, and run for office, and then you can have the responsibility. Until that time, I will, if the person is qualified, which Mr. Brown most certainly is, I will defer to the mayor's judgment on it. And Mr. Scontras, as I said, if he is more than qualified, if he wants to have a position in the city, I'm more than open to it though. But I'm not going to sit here, whether it was true or not, and agree to a backdoor, backroom promise that people are actually, people come in here and they say there's no transparency, but you're basically basing his appointment on nothing but behind the scenes things. So the hypocrisy notwithstanding, I cannot support Mr. Scontras under these circumstances. That's all I got to say.
Good evening, everyone. I will present right now as Mayor Doyle would like to speak as a resident.
So thank you, as this is my mayor's appointment, I just want to go through and kind of talk about the process. Okay, so let's be honest, city historian was not the top priority for the city over the past year. Getting through the pandemic and getting through multiple other issues was a top priority for the city. So as we create the agenda, and that is we, not the mayor, that is the mayor, the city administrator, and the deputy mayor, who are all part of those meetings that set the agenda. So as we went through, the city historian did not come up. Now, there was catalysts from some residents and from some councillors that wanted to see this city historian filled. So you asked for it, I've put forward a name. Now, let me clear up some misconception out there, because there's a lot. First off, the position wasn't created by me to entice anybody to do anything. The position was actually talked about in the previous mayor, who wanted to bring it forward, but as Counselor Johnston said, didn't get it done. So I took over as mayor, as elected by the people, and I said, "That's a great idea, a city historian, perfect. We put it before the council and you approved it." Thank you very much. So now we have the open position of city historian. It's my position as mayor to nominate that. So I look at all the qualifications of people. Anatole Brown, overview, experience, overview as an educator in social sciences, museum field background, master's degree in American and New England Studies, artifact preservation, handling, transport and digitalization, curriculum planning for all grade levels, extensive classroom management hours. Experience, education and program manager for the museum, for Saco Museum and Dyer Library, January 15 to the present day. In that capacity, he's responsible for creating, planning, and teaching history and museum programs tailored for K-8 grades and high school, public outreach for museum and library events and programs, managing contacts for museum volunteers and interns, Saco School Department Curriculum Committee liaison, archival research, and maintaining a session, excuse me, a session database via past perfect museum software, I'm not familiar with the software, so if I butchered the name, I apologize. Prior to that, until June of 2021, a substitute educational technician at the Saco Middle School, regular substitute teacher for sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, covering various subjects with special focus on social studies, history, and English literature, regular substitute for band and orchestra classes, one-on-one tutoring for special needs students, main education technician two certified, ESL, English as a second language, assistant instructor for the Saco Adult Learning Center. And there's more that you can actually look into the resume online. Education, University of Southern Maine, Portland, master's degree in American and New England Studies, bilingual fluent in written and spoken Japanese professional translation experience, computer stills. You asked me to put forward a qualified individual, and I have done that, a qualified individual that's doing a majority of what the position that you approved is going to do. So forget about the names of the people involved, forget about the political issue that's being created out of this, and look at it. Is the person qualified? Yes. And that should be the answer. You have a qualified individual in front of you. And again, this helps our community, it helps the city become a better partner with the library, right? And a library is a treasured asset that we don't want to lose, we want to continue to build a good rapport. This is not about one person, it's about doing what's best for the community. Thank you, Deputy Mayor McPhail. Any further, Counselor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been sitting here struck dumb a little bit, trying to get my thoughts and words together. To be honest, I find this whole situation incredibly sad. I don't know Mr. Scontras, I have an appointment to sit down with him tomorrow, where I hope I can learn more about his history and passion for Saco. I've never met nor seen Mr. Brown, although as we just heard, he is eminently qualified for this position. We've heard on several accounts about how much the situation has hurt Mr. Scontras. I suspect the same is true for Mr. Brown, who is undoubtedly listening to this, wondering what he's gotten himself into. No matter how the vote goes tonight, we're taking what should be a celebrated position, somebody to come and help preserve and celebrates our strong, interesting, and proud history of Saco, and we're tainting it with politics and gotchas and games back and forth. We're risking the position altogether, and certainly its integrity. The first job of the city historian won't be teaching the kids of Saco about their history, it won't be proclaiming the next big historical event, it will be simply restoring the dignity of the position. And that's too bad. I'm not yet sure how I'll vote, I'm sad I have to take one under these circumstances because there is no way we're going to produce a winner. The city of Saco is lost because we've gotten here, and it just makes me sad.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote on the motion. Counsel Archer?
No.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman? Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
Motion fails two five. That brings us to item, what was item A, which is now item B, and that is a joint meeting with the school board on page eight in your packet. And first up, we will have a presentation, this was done tonight in the agenda items because we will be presenting budgets and talking about that, that's why it wasn't done prior to the meeting. So first up, we will have a February budget review from Finance Director Salas.
Pardon me, just give me one moment, I'll be presenting a visual aid with the budget Okay, good evening. Per the city charter, we are engaging in a joint budget presentation with the school, but I'm going to kick off that joint presentation with a look at where we are year-to-date for fiscal year 2022. Summary of the general fund, the city did end February in a strong position. Net operating income through February was $6.9 million. That brings the unassigned fund balance to an estimated $16.4 million. Expenses were tracking ahead 4%, while revenues were tracking ahead, or my apologies, expenses were tracking behind 4% while revenues were tracking ahead 3%. Capital projects, code enforcement, county tax, economic development, finance, fire and ambulance, fringe benefits, information technology, insurance, planning, the police department, the school budget, the solicitor, and transfers are all considered on track because they are within 5% of the year-to-date forecast. Remaining departments will be detailed next. The assessing department is tracking 46% behind forecast. The department will not be expending any funds on the revaluation as discussed previously, where this item was budgeted out of unassigned fund balance. The unspent funds will be returned to the fund balance at year's end, and there was no impact on the taxpayers for budgeting this item in '22. City administration is tracking 9% behind forecast. Software, memberships, supplies, travel, and training are all tracking a little bit behind. City clerk is 32% behind forecast. Primarily, general assistance continues to run behind forecast, we've been talking about that through the year. Temper and seasonal wages is also a little bit light because the elections this year have been largely local. Communications is tracking 12% behind forecast. The AV project is ongoing, but only a portion of the funds have been spent year-to-date. Printing and software together have 11,500 remaining in the lines, and I am working with the department on a plan to expend funds by year's end. Contingency is tracking 52% behind forecast. Abatements came in much lighter this year than budgeted, and the senior tax rebate program was not booked until March. Grant funding initiatives, we have $48,197 in grant-funded expenditures to date. Human resources is tracking 23% behind forecast. Most of this underspend is related to staffing, where all positions were not filled until November. There are some funds remaining in the There are some funds remaining in the training line, and HR is working on a plan to utilize these funds through the rest of the year. Parks and Recreation is 14% behind forecast. Summer programming was lighter than normal, styles back to summer 2021 when there were still concerns about the COVID-19 pandemic. Savings on the expense side is offset by revenues, which are tracking 11% behind. Public Works is 15% behind forecast. Base pay is a little under due to turnover. Capital expenditures are behind forecast year-to-date, but the all-in budget is aligned with historical trends and likely to be either expended or encumbered by year's end. Contracts, this is largely waste management, are also tracking behind forecast, but they are aligned with fiscal year 2021 actuals. Utilities are low due to the purchase of Streetlights, which eliminated costly lease payments to CMP and savings even in year one. The available funds are anticipated to be spent on project enhancements with our partners at Real-Term Energy. Supported entities are 13% behind forecast. Uh, the Dyer Library is tracking one month behind in their monthly appropriation. Uh, request was put into accounts payable, and that line should be brought back into the forecasted amount, uh, in March. Are there any questions on the expenditure side? Switching to revenues, as I mentioned, revenues are tracking 3% ahead of forecast. Building rentals, fire and ambulance, public works, which is really, which is largely excise, and real and personal property taxes are all on track because they are within 5% of forecast. Uh, however, personal property taxes, which was tracking 3% ahead of forecast, is driving most of the revenue being ahead of forecast because it is such a significant portion of our revenue. Uh, the assessing department had $15,900 in revenues to date. City clerk fees are 53% behind forecast. This is related to general assistance, which is offset by the state and also offset by savings on the expense side. Code enforcement fees are 30% behind forecast. We have taken this revenue line item down a little bit for fiscal year 2023. Uh, however, in conversations with code enforcement, there are a couple commercial projects pending that may boost these revenues before the end of the year. Communications, which is franchise fees, are 51% behind forecast. Uh, the second quarter payment was received in March rather than February. Finance fees are 13% behind forecast. This has to do with the timing of lien interest. There was a 90-day delay in fiscal year 2021, and that cycle has continued to sort of make the forecast a little bit off for this year. Grant funding, we have received $31,408 to date. Uh, we do have some additional grant funding, which is booked and tracked in the capital projects fund for those capital projects that are offset by state grant funding. Parks and Recreation fees are 11% behind forecast. Again, these revenues are offset by savings on the expenditure lines. Um, it is possible that we will actually meet our forecasted revenues for Parks and Recreation since the summer enrollment fees are collected largely in June. Planning fees are 92% ahead of forecast. Planning and finance and planning continue to work closely together on cleaning up our processes so the city can continue to maximize this revenue source and, uh, collect cost recovery on planning review. The police department is 49% behind forecast. Uh, parking revenue and general revenues have been slow. Uh, we are looking at installing the parking meter for non-residents at the train station, which should assist in boosting this line. The school resource officer position at Thornton Academy was not renewed in fiscal year 2022 and is not budgeted in the fiscal year 2023 budget. Uh, we do have an, an allocated line, 195% of forecast, largely due to some balance sheet corrections related to, uh, December's detailed payroll audit. And there is a use of unassigned fund balance. This placenta line is designed to balance the budget, but no actual revenues are ever booked there. Are there any questions on the budget update? Okay. With that, we are going to pivot over to the fiscal year 2023 budget presentation. Okay. Uh, before I get started, I do have to say that it is exciting to be back doing the budget process in person. It's been three years, I had to count it on my hand, uh, since we were able to get together. There's many different faces, um, versus the last time that we did this in person, but it is, uh, wonderful to be able to get together and, you know, take a hard look at our priorities and strategic planning for fiscal year 2023 as a group. I want to begin this budget presentation with a generic overview of the process, defining some of the terms, especially for citizens who might be watching their first budget presentation, to give them a broad idea of what goes into the process of developing the City of Saco's budget. First of all, let's go back to basics. What is a municipal budget? A municipal budget is all of the expenses and revenues that the City of Saco needs to provide quality services for its citizens for a full fiscal year. What is a fiscal year? The city's fiscal year goes from July 1st to June 30th. The year is the last year, is the year of the last day of the year. So, for example, fiscal year 2023 will go from July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. What is the property tax rate? The city calculates taxes by multiplying the tax rate by the property value. That determines the amount of money that citizens must, must pay in property taxes each year. Sometimes we refer to the, we refer to the property tax rate as the mil rate. The mil rate is the property tax rate per $1,000 of property value. In fiscal year 2023, the mil rate was $18.88. The first phase of budget development is to define the maintenance-of-effort budget. The city administrator and finance together, finance director work together with the city departments to establish the maintenance-of-effort budget. Maintenance-of-effort means doing the same thing this year that we did last year. Doing the same thing may cost a little bit more. Why? There are cost of living increases, there's inflation, certainly something that's a hot topic, uh, in today's world, and of course contracted increases. Many contracts contain step increases from year to year, or we may be faced with an increased cost for the same contract based on population growth or some other metrics. Doing the same thing may cost a little bit less. Uh, one-time expenses from the previous year are excluded. The City of Saco does, um, make use of unassigned fund balance for one-time expenses to mitigate the impact to the taxpayers. Those do fall out of the maintenance-of-budget, of effort budget from year to year. And then line items with budgets higher than historical trends were analyzed as part of this budget process and adjusted down. So this gives just a summarized formula. The maintenance-of-effort budget is last year's budget plus contracted increases plus cost of living increases minus one-time expenses minus other savings. That equals the maintenance-of-effort budget. Phase two is the city administrator's budget. Departments may submit requests to expand services or increase department sizes. This may have to do with growth in the city, increasing regulatory requirements, or requests that come in from counselors or citizens to expand services. The city administrator reviews these requests and determines its final budget. The city administrator's budget is, equates to maintenance-of-effort budget plus approved increases minus other changes. That equates to the city administrator's budget. Phase three is budget presentation. That's where we're at tonight. Finance works with the city administrator to compile the city administrator's budget book based on his final approved adjustments. The city administrator and finance director then present the budget to council, as we will this evening. And then the school superintendent and school finance director present the school budget. Phase four is budget deliberation. Departments will, over the next couple of weeks, present their individual budgets to council. The public can view these presentations and offer public comment, uh, both during the public hearing part, portion of the evening. Um, they can submit questions to budget@saco main.org, or they can make their voices heard at the formal public hearing on the budget, which is scheduled for May 2nd. During this time, council also works with the finance department to draft amendments. If there are changes that you'd like to see, additional expansion of services, um, I'm available to partner with each of you in developing those budget amendments so that we can have a smooth approval process in May. That brings us to phase five, budget approval. On this, at the, on the second Monday in May, the council will review and vote on the fee schedule. It will review and vote on the capital plan. It will review and vote on the school budget. Amendments may be submitted by council to the school budget at the cost center level. Council reviews and votes on the municipal budget. Those amendments should be proposed and approved at the line item level. Finance then enters the final budget into our financial system and compiles the final approved budget book, which has the force of law for the coming year. So this is just a summary of the process I just outlined. We worked together to develop the maintenance-of-effort budget. Proposed increases are reviewed and other changes to create the city administrator's final budget. That budget is then presented to council. Council reviews the budget and, um, reviews departmental presentations, and then finally council approves the budget. So I want to talk a little bit about the budget book. The budget book is posted on the city website under the "More" section for this evening's presentation, and administration will be providing printed copies to the council later this week. The budget book has a number of sections, and I wanted to go over those sections a little bit so that you have some background before you, uh, start to read through it. The budget book is 250 pages long. That can be intimidating, especially if in your day-to-day work you're not reading lots of numbers and tables like I do. So I want to talk a little bit about what's in each section. The letter of transmittal is written by the city administrator. It's an introduction to his annual budget, provides an explanation of what was or wasn't approved in the budget and why. The next section is the introduction. It provides a basic overview of the budget process, very similar to the information I just presented. Um, it also provides some definitions for common terminology. I recommend taking the time to read this section, even if you've been through a budget process before, because it provides a good background to the budget book and some definitions. Section one contains an introduction of the City of Saco. Uh, includes some demographic information, as well as names and contact information for department heads and elected officials. Section two contains several tables that summarize the budget in different ways, so that's the fiscal summary section. Essentially, it's providing the reader with a couple of different ways of analyzing the budget at whatever level of detail is most comfortable or interesting for the reader. This section also contains the fee schedule, and it is where the city summarizes its head councils, a full-time equivalent schedule. The last table in this section provides a forecast for how the unassigned fund balance is expected to change through the end of fiscal year 2022 and then through 2023, based on any budgeted use of unassigned fund balance. Section three is the capital plan as required by charter. The city administrator is to submit a five-year capital plan to council that is rolled into the budget book. This is also the section where the city reports on debt payments and submits new debt for authorization from city council. Section four is the department budget section. This contains the individual departmental budgets. Each department head has invested time in a thoughtful written introduction to talk about accomplishments from the past year, ongoing challenges, and goals for fiscal year 2023. I definitely recommend taking the time to read these departmental introductions, as it will provide you with some good background prior to the departmental presentations. The narratives may spark questions or ideas that you wish to discuss with the department heads. This section also contains two views of each department's budget. There's a summary budget, which provides a view of the budget across the same 15 categories across the city, so that gives you the ability to sort of analyze between departments how much of the budget is being spent on what broad categories. Um, it also contains a couple graphic charts, a bar chart and a pie chart to give you some visual analyzation of the department budget. And finally, there is line item detail if you want to get into the weeds. Section five contains other budgeting units. This covers items that are not part of a city department, such as fringe benefit, contingency, insurance, et cetera. This is also where you can find a complete list of all of the supported entities, uh, which the city funds on an annual basis, and, uh, written letters. Um, each supported entity submits a written letter requesting their funding and providing some information about how that supported entity services the citizens of Saco. Uh, new this year, uh, the Dyer Library's complete budget is also available for your review in that section. Section six is other governmental funds. The city does maintain a number of funds on its balance sheet. This is for reporting revenues and expenditures related to specific non-tax funding mechanisms with special controls. The section includes summary reports only for those funds that have expenses or revenues budgeted in the coming year. So we do have more, uh, governmental funds on our books than may be reported in this budget book. For a complete list of all governmental funds, please see the annual financial statements for the City of Saco. This section is also where you will find the Economic Development Department and all of the TIF budgets. And it is also, there's also a section there, um, describing how the city plans to expend ARPA funds. The last section is the Water Resource and Recovery Department. Water Resource and Recovery Department revenues and expenditures are budgeted in a special kind of fund called an enterprise fund. This is because the amount that users pay into the WRD is directly related to their actual usage. For this reason, WRD is budgeted and reported more like a private sector enterprise than a governmental fund. However, council still approves the WRD budget and user rates on an annual basis. So now, the next couple of slides, we're going to talk about the columns. There are a lot of columns. For the sake of transparency, we do report five full years of history in addition to, um, the recommended budget. This, uh, the first four columns are full year actuals for fiscal year 2018 through The fiscal year 2022 current column provides a year-to-date actuals for fiscal year 2022 through February. The fiscal year 2022 approved column is the budget as approved by council on May 10th, 2021. It does not include any amendments that have been approved year-to-date. The maintenance-of-effort column equates to the fiscal year 2020, 2022 approved budget plus contracted increases plus cost of living increases minus one-time expenses minus other The dollar change and percent change columns are based on the dollar difference between the fiscal year 2022 approved budget and maintenance-of-effort, and the percent change between the 2022 approved and maintenance-of-effort budget. The maintenance-of-effort budget plus administrative, administrators' changes, that may be increases or decreases, equates to the city administrator's budget. A couple of tips for, uh, citizens that may want to read the budget book but feel intimidated by the length or width of it. Um, it is 250 pages long. That can be intimidating. Here's a couple of tips for how to read the book. When you open up each section and you look at the tables, start with the numbers at the bottom of the table. That gives you an idea of what the big picture is in terms of how the numbers have changed from year to year. Make use of the charts and graphs in each section as a visual guide to what's going on in the numbers. Look for the numbers that are changing the most or numbers that are changing the least. The numbers that change the most significantly, whether on a percentage basis or dollar change basis, are your budget drivers that are really driving change in the budget. Use a highlighter. If anything pops out, you can highlight it. And also write down your questions, whether that's in the physical budget book itself or perhaps on a notebook that you might have handy. You can send your questions to budget@saco main.org or, um, and a member of the finance department will be able to address those, um, either during public comment or on an FAQ section on the website. And I do recommend having a cup of coffee or tea handy when you're reading through Before we get into the numbers, are there any questions on the budget process or the budget book as I've laid out for you? are there any questions on the budget process or the budget book as I've laid out for you? Every year, I've led off the discussion of the budget with the cycle of sustainability. I developed the cycle of sustainability as a model, a visual aid, to describe the primary strategic challenges that we face on an annual basis. It creates a shared language and understanding of the role of budgeting and maintaining a strong community, and also provides a visual aid for understanding the complex interdependency of population growth, property valuation, and tax rates on strategic challenges to a healthy budget. Some of you may be very familiar with the cycle of sustainability, but I would ask your patience as I go through it again for citizens who may be watching a budget presentation for the first time. The cycle of sustainability starts with the city of Saco's best-in-class city services: strong infrastructure, safe neighborhoods, great schools, and more. In January of 2022, you, the council, engaged in a strategic planning exercise to prioritize goals and focus areas for the coming years. The outcome of that strategic prioritization resulted in the nine focus areas you see on the wheel prioritized and ordered clockwise. So number one was financial stability. Number two was schools and infrastructure, economic opportunity, growth and innovation, governance, transparency and engagement, livable community, environmental sustainability, and organizational excellence. Of course, this year, we're also engaged in a multi-point prioritization process because in addition to council goals, we have comp plan and we have the ARPA prioritization exercise. The point of this visual aid is to try and align council goals, comp plan principles, and ARPA priorities into a single strategic planning tool. Council goals, the first one being financial stability, correlates most closely with the comp plan principles to provide a variety of housing options and strengthen our city's fiscal position. Under ARPA priorities, this correlates to housing support in terms of creating affordable housing. Council goal, schools and infrastructure, of course aligns with the comp plan principles, schools and infrastructure, but it also aligns with the principle to design a connected mobility system. Those then correlate to the ARPA priorities, capital funding for right-of-way and capital funding for public safety. The ARPA priorities, the number that leads off the priority indicates in what order the ARPA prioritization exercise that particular item fell. So capital funding for right-of-way was ranked second in the prioritization exercise. Capital funding for public safety was ranked number 12. Economic opportunity correlates to the comp plan principle, expand economic opportunity for all, and that correlates to the economic assistance ARPA priority. Growth and innovation correlates to smart growth out of the ARPA priorities. Governance, sort of its own priority, relates to maintaining up-to-date code, charter, and internal policies. Transparency and engagement correlates to capital funding for IT infrastructure. Livable community correlates to enhance our downtown as the lively core of our community, and also to promote health and well-being. Those then correlate to the ARPA priorities, healthy childhood, capital funding for parks and open spaces, and public health services. Environmental sustainability correlates to the comp plan principle to grow our environmental stewardship and build resiliency. Those then correlate to the ARPA priorities, the wastewater treatment plant, which is fundamentally a resiliency initiative, and of course, environmental sustainability. And finally, organizational excellence correlates to hazard pay under ARPA. Certainly, as we look at this grid and we look at what the top five and the next five were out of the comp plan prioritization, financial stability, schools and infrastructure, and economic opportunity do float to the top as being top priorities for this coming budget cycle. So here we are. The city's best-in-class city services as prioritized by the council. Best-in-class city services drive population growth as more people want to move to our great community. Population growth then drives rising property values, whether that be expansion of inventory or rising demand for existing inventory. Rising property values drive growing tax revenue and other revenue, which in turn pay for the growth and cost of our best-in-class city services on a flat tax rate. As you can see, over the past couple of years, the mill rate has been very stable. And in fact, in 2022, it did even come down a little bit. What were our challenges in the fiscal year 2023 budgeting process? Most significantly, we were challenged with the fact that tax revenue was being diverted to TIFs. Of course, there's growth in our community, and a lot of that growth was ending up in TIF districts, which was creating a divergence of tax revenue. If you look at this chart, you can see that the most significant growth by percentage was indeed TIF transfers year over year. I would like to note that on an absolute dollar basis, personnel costs were actually a little bit more expensive than TIF transfers. However, personnel costs at 7.3% were almost identical to property growth, which was also 7.3% in this budget cycle. So it did not have an impact on the actual tax rate itself. The question might be, why are TIF transfers a cost? It's a shelter district. In essence, when you calculate the municipal tax levy, municipal expenses plus TIF transfers minus non-tax municipal revenues equate to the municipal tax levy. The municipal tax levy divided by the municipal valuation generates the municipal tax rate. So for this reason, an increase in TIF transfer amounts increases the municipal tax levy. In order to alleviate the pressure of these TIF transfers on the budget, Economic Development, Finance, and Administration, along with Public Works, worked very closely together to identify additional qualified expenditures currently in the general fund that could then be shifted to TIFs. This alleviated the pressure of TIF growth. In fact, $671,000 in qualified general fund expenses were shifted to the TIF budget in 2023. One might ask, why TIFs? Why continue to have TIF districts? What's the benefit to the taxpayer? The reality is that when the state of Maine calculates the EPS subsidy, which funds a significant portion of our school district, as you will hear shortly, they look at valuation growth in the city. And if there is significant valuation growth, that actually reduces the amount of EPS subsidy that our partners in the school district receive. In fact, for every dollar of growth, 41 cents is lost to an EPS subsidy adjustment. In addition to that, 2 cents are lost because the county tax formula will expect the city of Saco to contribute more in county taxes, and 5 cents are lost due to an adjustment in revenue sharing. So the benefit is significant in TIF districts in maintaining a strong EPS subsidy for our schools. In fact, if you look at the last couple of years, the school mill rate has been steadily decreasing. This shows the benefit of sheltering growth in our TIF districts so long as we can continue to find qualified projects within the general fund to make use of those TIF funds. Before I get into the actual numbers for the Maintenance of Effort budget, are there any questions about what I've presented so far regarding the budget? So here we are, the Maintenance of Effort budget. Once again, I'm going to remind everyone of the formula. The Maintenance of Effort budget is last year's approved budget plus contracted increases, plus cost of living increases, minus one-time expenses, minus other savings. That gets you your Maintenance of Effort budget. What's in the Maintenance of Effort budget that you find in your budget books? What were some contracted increases? So contracted increases in fiscal year 2023. IT and finance did see some increases on the software fees. Council did approve the Chapter 175 amendment for the Senior Tax Rebate Program. We have budgeted a full match to the state of Maine's Property Tax Fairness Credit, which is about $150,000. That was a $90,000 increase over the old Senior Tax Volunteer Program amount. The police department had some contracted services and personnel adjustments. We have continued to see increased costs related to curbside collection and solid waste tipping fees. Of course, the TIF transfer increases that we discussed previously, and water bills are up across the city 30%. That's related to the new treatment facility that's being built. Cost of living increases, as in the last couple of years, non-union employees received a 3% increase. For union employees, we matched approved or draft union contracts, depending on the union. There was also a 4.7% increase for the Dyer Library, where the employees only got 1.3% in fiscal year 2022. City employees received 3%, so we're trying to catch them up in this budget cycle. We do try and keep the COLA for the Dyer Library equitable with what city employees are receiving. Like I mentioned, there is a 3% cost of living increase built into this budget. However, if you dig into the detailed line item base pay, you may see an increase of 4.7%. I'm going to explain that number now. The council approved only 1.3% in the pay lines as of May 10, 2021. An additional 1.7% was approved for fiscal year 2022, but budgeted in payroll contingency to enable flexibility for the city administrator in negotiating union contracts. That 1.7% was then distributed as a budget amendment mid-cycle. So because we're comparing the 2022 approved budget to the 2023 city administrator's budget, that 1.7% that was moved from contingency to base pay lines mid-cycle, plus the 3% COLA, which is budgeted in this Maintenance of Effort budget, gets you to a 4.7% COLA increase in fiscal year 2023 versus 2022. But I did want to emphasize once again, employees are only actually receiving a 3% increase. Some of the base pay lines may be a different number than 4.7%. What are some other factors that could play into these lines? We have had union contracts that have had variable increases, so that could be a factor. The wage and comp implementation has resulted in some additional adjustments, so you might see that number be different. And then several departments have had structural changes, so that moves the amounts around between the lines. Are there any questions about the cost of living adjustment? The Maintenance of Effort budget did have some one-time items removed. The 2022 budget had $386,800 in capital and equipment purchases, offset by unassigned fund balance. Those did fall out of the Maintenance of Effort budget. There was $9,000 in one-time training and contracted services expenses, which were removed. And of course, the revaluation, $225,000, also fell out of this budget. We also enjoyed some savings in this budget. The lease purchase of streetlights will result in a savings of $94,176 in year one. Public Works also had some additional adjustments versus historical trends that resulted in a savings of $26,000. And Parks and Rec made some adjustments to overtime that saved the city $10,000. The next phase is the city administrator's budget. The city administrator's budget equates to the Maintenance of Effort budget plus approved increases minus other adjustments. That gets you your city administrator's budget. And for that portion of the presentation, I'm going to turn it over to city administrator Kane Raff.
All right, thank you, Glenna. And I would just like to thank Glenna for, again, doing a tremendous job in helping to compile this budget as she usually does. So thank you seriously for all your efforts. We appreciate it. So we'll start off with some very small increases in the city administrator's budget. These are under $10,000 increases. Assessing had some Adobe software licenses, the clerk's office, some contracted E-code services, fire department, some protective equipment, finance, professional development, HR, professional development, and contracted services, police, responder, live connect, and Eastern Trail membership, caring unlimited, these are some new third-party entities, fully funding the Dyer Library's requested budget, seeds of hope, and some new items, Saco Bay Trails, and also Vet2Vet, which is a local vets organization, asked for some very small appropriations, which we did include. So when it comes to headcount, that's usually one of the biggest items of interest. What new staff? Were you looking at hiring? And I can say we were very judicious in our look at this. Departments had to come forward with some very detailed data analysis of actual need for growth. We were very stringent on this and have put forward for this year FY23 for headcount requests. So in the fire department, we're looking for two fire EMS providers. As you know, several years ago, there was a study done of our fire department, done by MRI, that had us looking to get to a goal as far as our population, our population growth, and where we should be as far as staffing every year, despite some difficult years. And last year, we requested just one. We are working to get to that level where we should be, as identified on the report. As you know, the city is growing. Our calls for service, PD, NFD, continue to grow, and things are not slowing down. So we have asked for two additional fire and EMS providers. And Public Works, as you know, through the pandemic, they faced additional responsibilities as far as cleaning and building maintenance. You see here, you know, it's a 1,000% increase with just one facility to 11 facilities by 2022. So we are asking for one additional custodian slash laborer to help out that department in the increasing needs that they face all around the city. And lastly, especially during the pandemic, IT has demonstrated quite a bit of additional need with the number of tickets that they receive, tickets for service into their departments. So we're asking for one part-time additional help desk support agent to support our IT technology department. As you know, there are three of them. IT needs continue to grow. Software needs continue to grow, and calls for service continue to grow. So that is one part-time headcount request there. But again, we were pretty, the bar was high here, and staff knew that going in, the bar was high, to demonstrate their need for headcount. And so these are the four that we've determined. You know, not to say the others, you know, weren't worthy, but these are the four that really rose to the top as far as demonstrated need that they were able to present, that we've included in the budget for FY23. So as Glenna talked about earlier, we did see quite a bit of growth in our TIF districts as far as valuation. And with that, we required to shift some qualified expenditures over to TIF funds that are mostly capital, as you see here, $50,000. Move collective road safety improvements to TIFs. $300,000 move prorated paving budget to TIFs. About $40,000 annualized prorated lease debt. $15,000 prorate local road drainage. $140,000 full-packs local match. $25,000 move group one sidewalk bond payments to TIF. $48,000 Lincoln Street upgrade bond payment to TIF, and $25,000 sidewalk budget annually in the DPW budget to TIF. As you see on the bottom, we anticipate these being an ongoing permanent increase in the TIF transfer amount. But we have continued to see tremendous growth in our TIF districts, and we have to do something with that money. So here you see a grand total of about $671,000 shifted over to TIF for FY23. Use of fund balance. We have tried also to very much limit our use of fund balance in the budget. As you know, during the year, we often have other needs that come along where we want to use fund balance. So we have tried to include as little use of fund balance as possible in this budget. And so you see just $100,000 for a portion. This is sort of a down payment for the, for public health, safety, communications, radio upgrade, that's going to be a longer-term project, and $250,000 starter funds for a public health and safety records management migration. So just $350,000 this year. Last year, in the budget, we relied on about $1 million. So here we get into some of the numbers. On the expense side, you see our overall expense is about $62,707 to $65,200. The city went from $33,000 to $35,367,000. School up, less so this year, $23,000 to $25,000. And the county, a small bump also, $1,002,000 to $1,003,000. Looking at the revenue side, we have seen also healthy growth in revenues, which is good news. So city revenues, not including tax revenue, $10,273,000 to $11,489,000. There, as I just said, our fund balance, we went from, in FY22 approved, a $1 million down to just $350,000. And our tax revenue has seen healthy growth, $51,500,509,000 to $53,368,000. So good news on the revenue side that we are seeing growth there. With that, with the real estate market, the way it has been going, as you know, our assessing department continues to update valuations based on market data. And with that, we are going to see some growth in valuation this year, of course. And with that, it's going to allow us to, again, ratchet the mill rate down. So we are at 1,888 right now, and our S. So we are at 1888 right now, and our estimate, estimate is to go down to about 1816. But just so the public, you know, understand this, this does not mean that your tax bill is going down. This is a seesaw effect. So when we have more valuation, AKA revenue, we are able to drop the mill rate, the assessed value per $1,000 down. So this does not mean your tax bills are going down, but our mill rate is going down to what we project is 1816 this year. The pie chart, this has been pretty consistent over the years, city versus school. So school is slightly the larger piece of the pie. The city, 44% you see. And the county, again, fairly consistent, just 3% of the pie here. So as Gwyneth talked about earlier, we did have ARPA this year, which is a new piece of our budgeting process. So just to recap, the federal government has issued stimulus funding to states and municipalities in order to mitigate the impact of COVID-19 on local budgets. So the city of Saco, not being an entitlement community, received about $2.1 million of ARPA funds. There are other communities out there who are HUD-designated entitlement communities, for example, Biddeford, South Portland, others, who received substantially more. Just as a comparison, Biddeford received $10 million, being not that much bigger than us, just barely more than us in population, we received just over two. So that's, that's also a relevant factor to note, because there are some out there who believe we have just been awash in money from the federal government. And so that's not the case. We did get a nice $2.1 million, but there are other communities who received substantially more. So with that, we wanted to open up a process for council and citizen input of what we do with this money and how do we spend this money. I'd like to thank our communications department also, as well as finance, for coming up with a process where we could allow input from you, the council, mayor, and also our citizens. All seven councils and the mayor did complete this exercise. Thank you. And we also had, which I think is really terrific, 361 citizens from our community. Get involved, go through this survey, and provide their input of what they should, you know, they believe we should do with the $2.1 million. So thank you for everyone, for their participation there. So the process involves coming up with a final score with all of the categories that involve the citizen ranking, the council, as you see. And we came up with this, and again, thank you, Gwyneth, for your work here. So each area received a final score, and it was sort of separated into three tiers. You see tier one, two, and three. So in tier one, the top priorities among all of the people who, including council and mayor, who participated in the process was capital funding for parks and open space, and also capital funding for right-of-way, which is roads, parking, and sidewalks. And sidewalks are of particular interest to a number in our community. Down to tier two, you see housing support, including affordable housing, public health services, which was number one ranked by the citizens, you'll note, environmental sustainability, economic assistance, smart growth, healthy childhood, and capital funding for IT infrastructure. Then in the third tier, there was funding for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as hazard pay and capital funding for public safety. So that led us to, we'll see on the next slide, just over 1.7 million total funding. And you see the, the numbers here, year one, two, and the total. We tried to really fit these projects into those goals and those focus areas. There are a couple you see didn't really receive any funding because they weren't qualified projects. But so this was a best stab at kind of fitting this into those categories. And some of the things, so these are some of the specific projects for use of ARPA funds. So Cascade Falls, the bridge replacement there is $60,000. Young School, park drainage, Prentice Park upgrades, Camp Ellis Boat Ramp Replacement down at Camp Ellis, which we've been talking about for a couple of years. Culver Replacement, this is the major culvert replacement on Bloom Road. It's, it's quite a large culvert in compliance with new DEP requirements. We'd like to take a stab at affordable housing in this community and coming up with a real action plan there. And so we've budgeted $70,000 towards that effort. Community Engagement Specialist Liaison in our police department, falling under public health, which is already off to a tremendous start. Upgrading our public health, safety call recording server, public health and safety communications radio upgrade, EMS ambulance equipment replacement, fire department, PPE gear extractor washer, this is a critical piece of safety equipment for all fire departments, SNPDC and environmental assessment, $15,000. This relates back to the climate resolution that was passed by this council. A multi-year rollout for computers. This is the largest you'll see dollar figured on here, which was the rehab and opening of the teen center at 12 School Street, which, as you know, the city purchased a couple of years ago, which has been sort of shelved the past few years, and moving for some prorated ARPA admin fees, lastly, $25,000. So what remains is about $350,000. And of course, it's your purview to move these things around however you'd like. But what has not been sort of appropriated in what we just talked about is about $350,000, some additional projects to consider. And I think the two on here that are really going to be a major focus area is, number one, hazard pay for frontline workers, which many other communities have done. I'll tell you that you're going to be in a presentation on that in the near future on that specific item. But that's been something that many other communities have looked at and devoted some ARPA funds to. The other one, as you know, is the countywide dredge initiative that many, with SOS and others, have been working pretty hard on. I know the mayor's spoken passionately about this this year. So that's another one that I think, you know, is certainly on the table to take a look at. But some other ideas, you know, environmental sustainability with the Energy Committee. There's a number of projects there, some smart growth items, traffic impact fee study, Portland Road Subarea Plan, Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, you know, Habitat for Humanity. That's, you know, we had a great project here in the last couple of years, possibly consider that. Grant program for services for housing, insecure individuals, again, going back to affordable housing. And one of the real issues coming at the forefront in our time was, you know, the unhoused and how to assist that population. So just a sort of menu of options, there may be many others. But I think the two on here that you're probably going to be hearing more about in the near future is the hazard pay for frontline workers, particularly public safety during the time of COVID, as well as the dredge initiative that many have worked pretty hard on. So strategic planning, how do we stack up, going back to the focus areas, one, two, and three. As you saw, financial stability, schools and infrastructure, economic opportunity, were your three, top three focus areas in this year's goal-setting session. So how did we come out? Financial stability, we are going to be talking about a revale in the near future as soon as we have some better market data, and our assessors say it's a good time to do it. So that really fits into financial stability, number one. Schools and infrastructure, we did hit quite a bit there. You see 33% of the pie. Economic opportunity came in at seven. But also to point out, includes the, the public health, which was the number one ranked by citizens. That's the other big piece of the pie. So that was our citizens' priority, and so I think that's important to note also. So the amendment process, as you know, you are, of course, authorized and even maybe encouraged to amend the city administrators' budget. Amendments can be submitted at any time, but we're, of course, encouraging you to do it the sooner the better. Amendments to the city budget should be at the line item level, city budget, and of course, school budget by cost center. Finance administration are available to work with counselors to draft budget amendments. We're here to help you with your ideas, and we'll help get it into writing. And amendments will be reviewed during budget deliberation on May 2. So we're asking for everyone to please have your amendments into finance by April 29, by the end of the day. And of course, amendments are approved during our budget approval evening, which will be May 9 this year. So lastly, the timeline and presentations of what's coming up. April 4, you're going to hear presentations from Saco Main Street, BSOOB Transit, the Dyer Library, Water Resource Recovery Department, Economic Development, as well as the city clerk. On April 11, you'll hear from Information Technology, Communications, Human Resources, and Fringe Benefits, the fire department, Parks and Recreation, Finance. And on April 25, you'll hear, you'll have, we'll have another joint meeting of the school board, so welcome back to them. Police Department, assessing, our planning department, public works, as well as the capital improvement plan, code enforcement, and lastly, administration. On May 2, will be the budget public hearing. We'll review, review of budget motions and amendments, council discussion. And finally, on May 9, we will have the budget adoption, city and school side. So that wraps up the city's presentation of the FY '23 budget. I will say, I think we have put forward what is a balanced and responsible budget. The overall net tax levy increase on this budget as proposed is a little, is about 3.58%, which is a very responsible budget. We have balanced the needs of the city, the needs of the community, the needs of our departments, as well as, of course, kept in mind what is most important to many, which is the overall tax burden on our citizens. We have many, many people who, young families who would like to live here. We have seniors on fixed incomes who would like to stay here. And we need to consistently be mindful of those people in our community who cannot just absorb big increase on their tax bill. So I think we've done a very good job of balancing our needs, the times that we've lived through with COVID, and also keeping in mind that bottom line number on people's tax bills, which here is going to be about a 3.5% increase. So considering the times, what we're facing, the rising costs, inflation, everything else, I think it's a very responsible budget. It's a balanced budget, and I hope you'll, you'll go forward and approve something in this range of hopefully at least under 4%. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention. Thank you to all the staff behind me here, as well as Gwyneth, for working on this budget. It's been a tremendous effort, and I think we put forward a very good product. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any question? Councilor Archer?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McRae. Can you go back to the page? I think I misheard, or it was misstated. Go back to the school budget portion, four or five pages earlier. Right there. Oh, sorry, I think it was right there. One more over. Amendments to the school budgets. We just had a charter amendment. It's no longer done by cost centers. It went into effect beginning of this year. It's total, totality of the budget. Section 6.06, approved by the voters.
All right. Thank you. Good catch.
Literally states, not literally, but it states the city council may only increase or decrease the total amount.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. This is a team, this is a team collaborative effort, so we appreciate that.
That was two years ago, or a year ago.
Any further questions regarding the city administrators' budget? Any questions for the city administrator or the finance director, Councilor McPhail?
Thank you. Gwyneth, you had said in yours, we did the one-time item removed of the 225 revaluation. Now, we split that in 2019 to break up the total cost that we were anticipating coming. Are we going to have to, is that being completely removed out? And when we are ready to do the revale, do we need to rebudget the entire amount? Or is it just being moved someplace else?
Yes, that's a great question. So it's been in 2021, which was the first year that we budgeted it, it fell to the unassigned fund balance because no funds were expended. And in 2022, it's fallen to the unassigned fund balance because no funds were expended. So essentially, it's just gone back into the unassigned fund balance.
And Brian, do we, the ARPA funds for the additional projects for the 350, can we put those possible request in for like where we would like to see it with the amendments? Or will it be a separate process?
Gwyneth, I don't think this needs to be an amendment. I think through discussions of the budget, you can determine additional priorities there. Because it's not appropriate, I would think it's, it's an amendment, correct? You have a different take?
Yeah, so in the past, for example, if we were going to make a change to a TIF district, it doesn't have to be at the line item level. We just say, you know, appropriate $100,000 and state the intention, and then build out the individual line items in the budget if it's approved by council.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, now we will go on and moving on to the item three, school department budget presentation. Superintendent Ray. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, a five-minute recess for some IT review? So five-minute recess. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Superintendent Ray.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Good to be before you guys again. I somehow feel like what I'm going to present here tonight, we've kind of almost gone through a lot of it. So if you've heard this before, just give me a little signal because it's, you know, it's like quarter of nine and no one wants to hear the superintendent talk, especially at quarter of nine. So as we come into the draft budget for FY '23, a couple of pieces are that are a little bit different for us. And the fact that been here kind of serving in the role for about 10 months, and this is budget number two. And last spring, we certainly were living in a very different time where we were concerned about making sure our kids were back to school. And there was a lot, lot happening in a really condensed period of time. And so I see this budget as a situation of, this is like building the foundation for us going forward. And certainly, when superintendents come in and they have a team looking at things, there's certain, sometimes different ways that people become accustomed to doing everything. And this year, we sent out a budget to our school committee. And I know Glennis was talking about 250 pages, but I think we were like 580, 600. And so what we tried to do is really make sure that every expense that we could project in the school budget was on a piece of paper. And it was there from salary and benefit to wages and all of those things. And the school committee got, had an opportunity to kind of go through those line by line. So that when you're in a situation and you're making adjustments and/or additions, it's pretty clear that you have to either highlight something to take it out or, or write a note to put it in because there is a space for it. And so that was one of the, the pieces that we had on the school side that was new to us. Also, something else that was new to us is we were really trying to look at, as our teachers built the budget, putting in a request and not saying, hey, everyone gets $200. But more or less trying to get a sense of what is needed. Because some years there are needs in certain areas of a school department that may be different from the next year. And again, trying to have a better understanding of where we're at. So I always start off with talking about valuation in the ED 279. And, you know, as Glennis and the city administrator talked about is that valuation is the biggest thing that drives school subsidy. And over the last several years here, certainly not only just in Saco, but in Southern Maine in general, property values are increasing rapidly. And the city of Saco this year, in their three-year average, what the state does is it takes a three-year average of property valuation. And our three-year average this year grew $165 million, which means, you know, if that's the same growth that the rest of the state is going through, that's okay. But in Southern Maine, 7% was kind of where everybody in Southern Maine came in. And Saco was one of those 7%, whereas the rest of the state was at 5%. So when you think about valuation as a whole, when you're over what the rest of the state does, that's going to decrease your subsidy. Because your valuation was more than the rest of the state. In the state of Maine, there was like 140 communities that were at 5% or less. And so when you think about the state budget and general purpose aid, the governor this year put $30 million in general purpose aid, more than the prior year. 140 of those communities shared $36 million of that $30 million. So they actually kind of took some from the others. And in our situation, we are one of, you know, a dozen communities or more that kind of accounted for about $7, $8 million in losses. And so when you look at that, and when you think about starting this budget, the Saco School Department, from just last year, and when we were here in July last year, the state of Maine put up about a whole bunch of new revenue. And we received about $1.6 million more. Now, the great decisions that we all made was not to spend that money. And we took $1 million of it, and we put it towards making sure that the revenue this year would pay back the negative fund balance that we have, so that we can wipe that off the books, which allows us to kind of start fresh. But it's a half million, it's $514,000 less than what we were dealing with just in July. So that put us at a little bit of a disadvantage. I also will just caution everybody that when you look at the three-year average for the next cycle, when we're here in a year talking to you guys, we'll be talking about a valuation growth of $181 million. Now, well, Saco's valuation growth outpaces the state. And, you know, the old magic eight ball here. As I see it, yes, because we know what is happening every time there's a home sale in the area. We know what Southern Maine is going through. I think there was a, there's a really great graph the other day, or an article in the newspaper that talked about just kind of population growth around the state, and looking at York County as being one of the counties that had highest population growth. And based off just housing stock, that is going to drive home sales. And that valuation is going to increase. So I know that you guys, over your time, you've become very familiar with the ED 279. And I want to run through certain pieces of this. I've been through this with you guys about a month ago as a board, but I just want to touch on a couple of topics. So on the 279, the front page is about student counts. And gaining subsidy based off student counts, teacher ratios, and really looking at what our ratios are compared to what essential services and essential programs and services, their kind of floor is. And when they say essential services and programs, part of the problem with the funding formula is that while it's conveyed to us as the floor, the math acts like a ceiling. And I want to grab you to the second box down where it just, as an example, teachers. I think Saco is a very lucky school department. And we have adequately funded the necessarily level of teachers in our district. But as a school, as the state sees it, they think we should only have 114.93 teachers based off our population. And we have 138 teachers in the district that counts towards EPS formula. So in that sense, we get a ratio of .83. And this happens in all of the categories that we go down through, from guidance, librarians, health, education, health, ed techs, library ed techs, clerical, school administration, and they assign a weight based off your percentages and what they think you should have. They have a matrix that takes salaries and degree levels and step levels, and they assign a value to each individual employee. And then they calculate that into a number. So when you see the SAU data in the EPS matrix at $7.6 million, they multiply that by .83. So if you were at one, you'd get the 7.6. At a .83, you get $6.397 million. And they continue to move down through the sheets of all of these categories. So that you're trying to build what is an EPS staff rate. So on the front page, what you're hoping for as a superintendent is that that number to be higher. Because then we turn to page two in our presentation, in the EPS formula. And they provide different weights per student. Now, this is a piece that we need to pay a lot of attention to on page two. Because certainly, we look at our subsidizable pupil count. So that's the counts that are pre-K through eight and nine through 12. And here in Saco, our subsidizable pupil count is 2,722.5 students. They do an average over a couple of years. But in the middle of this page, the state did something unique this year. And so over the last two years during the pandemic, students in the state of Maine have had the opportunity to eat school lunch at a subsidizable rate by the federal government. It's a great equalizer in communities and for students, just being able to go in and take that kind of barrier away. But in doing that, we used to collect kind of that information based off parents returning a form to school. So there was really a disin, I won't say a disincentive, but no incentive for anyone to complete that form. You know, not everybody probably wants to share that information with a school anyway. But what that's done is that kind of decreased everybody in the state's economically disadvantaged rate. So the state for this year took a three-year average and put the highest economically disadvantaged rate as the calculating factor. And you see this as .3019 in that first box, kind of in the middle. About 98% of the school communities in the state are using the highest three-year average because of that factor. So as that possibly in another year transitions back to how we collect forms or how parents report, this is an area where you could see a decrease going down. If that number goes down, we are going to see less subsidy in the future. Item number two, that on this page, in the second, in the box over in the middle of the page, is they changed the EPS rate for students who are economically disadvantaged from .15 to .20, which drives almost, in that category, almost another 20, 25% subsidy. I think it would be hard for us to disagree on the fact or anyone that students who come from a disadvantaged background need less funding behind them. We know that they need more funding behind them. And so as you look at how we calculate this piece, if those two factors swing back to the process that has been used in other years without a change in legislation, that could negatively impact subsidy for all schools in the state of Maine. Schools, obviously, that have higher free and reduced lunch rates would be hurt more than someone who, you know, may be looking at a less than 10% free and reduced status. So on the second page, we look at your pre-K counts, your disadvantaged counts, if there's ELL students in your community, and then some targeted funds based off technology, student assessment, et cetera. Creating an operation allocation, and at this point is, you're trying to build your EPS formula. You're building the funds that go into looking at how this all calculates out with your valuation. On the third page of your formula are some of your reimbursable rates. From gifted and talented education that comes back as a reimbursement, special education, high costs out of district, your transportation, your approved bus leases. If you remember other presentations that people have given to you before, each year, the school department has the ability to look at buses that are 15-plus years old, have 125,000 miles on them, and then apply through to the state to get reimbursed over a five-year cycle. Typically, they'll, you'd do a five-year lease. It's not uncommon to have a slight gap in funding, because sometimes you might add luggage racks, you know, if you're on certain bus or under storage, and there's a little gap in prices. But we get $120,000 in allocation towards approved bus leases. We also can go down and look at $81,000, which is something that we were able to pull together last year. And that is the approved lease for toddle-in. We receive $8 per square foot back on the toddle-in lease that we have. That is something that can only happen for five years, and then that funding would go away. We have three more years on that lease. You have insured value factor. So insured value factor is looking at 5% of your maximum allowable tuition for students that attend Thornton Academy. And they provide additional money to go towards capital projects at a place like Thornton Academy. So that's that's in this line here. When you go through this piece, you look at all of these numbers combined, and you're at 39.8. That's your combined allocation. Now you take your combined allocation of 39.8, multiply it by your three-year average evaluation, and the mil expectation. This is the state saying that you must raise 7.1 mils towards education to get a local allocation of 18.396. You take your 35 million at the top, minus your 18 million, and it says, city of Saco, this is what the state will fund for you. And that number is $17,443,000, which is $514,000 less than last year. On the back page, you'll see, on the last page, you'll see that you receive $122,000 by being a member of a regional service center. And your combined local share is 51.33% of education, and the state share is 48.67. As that valuation continues to increase, you will see that state share go down. So we talked about, we've talked at the last meeting about revolving renovations. And in a year's time, you've almost lost a percentage of state funding. So as you think about moving forward and the other pieces, that number will continue to drop. Also, just wanted to highlight student counts with you. K through eight of where we're at and at Thornton Academy. And this is month by month throughout the year. Certainly, at the beginning of the year, you'll see that enrollments are typically a little bit higher. A lot of that is because you'll have students during the month of September, parents moved over the summertime, they haven't contacted the school yet, the registrations haven't transferred from school to school. But as we fluctuate through the year, you can see that we have been, you know, as low as 1807 to now at 1826. The other piece why there's a little bit of fluctuation throughout the year, certainly, parents over the last couple of years made some decisions about schooling for their children. Do we stay in homeschool? Are we coming back to school? Masks were on, and we might, may have made a decision. Now masks are off, and others may have made other decisions. So you can see the counts from month to month. So now we get into the heart of the budget and where we were as a school department. And looking at cost drivers, reductions, position changes. And as we talked about, we are here trying to build a good, strong foundation, trying to understand exactly where every dollar is going. every dollar is going, what are the requests that we have, and are trying to be extremely detailed on our predictions. And so as we looked at employees' wages and steps, you have a situation where almost six hundred thousand dollars just go to employee wage increase. You have health insurance, which we figured to start this budget was at ten percent. So we got some pretty decent news the other day, and we'll get to a slide on that where the maximum increase is going to be eight percent. So there's about ninety thousand dollars in savings. Hopefully, by April ninth, we're expected to get our true rate, and we're really hopeful that it'll be less than eight. So when you look at the difference in this budget between wages, wage increases, health insurance, you're at about one point one million dollars. The total increase is one point six million dollars, so we have a gap of about a half a million dollars in here. When we look at the items that we have added and that the school committee has looked at, placing into the budget, we've looked at areas of obviously increased tuition to Thornton Academy. Adding a seed payment for main care billing, we bill about a half a million dollars in main care each year, and locals are required to match thirty-four percent of what you get. And in the past, that expenditure hasn't been there, it's just kind of been decreased from the revenue. We felt that it was really important to show that expenditure and the revenue so that you can calculate exactly what's coming in. You have a share of students who attend Thornton Academy that attend the vocational center, and vocational center funding gets their money from the state. And typically, there's a gap between operational costs and state subsidy. And when there's a gap, we have a formula kind of divides that between all the communities that send, and if X number of students are sent there, from each community, they pay those differences. We've looked at the needs that our students have, and last year, we added three resiliency coordinators to our elementary schools to help students and families as they adjust to some of the social pressures that are out there, some of the needs that they come to school with. And we look at, one of the pieces that we've kind of studied over the course of the year is just the supports that are in place, especially at Saco Middle School. When you look at kids who are probably going through some of the most difficult times in their lives, as they're changing, they're growing up, and, you know, the social pressures that are out there that we didn't have, and helping kids work through that piece. And so we're recommending adding a resiliency coordinator at SMS. Also in this budget, have an opportunity to work with Chief Clement and build that relationship. We talked a lot about the need for an SRO in our schools. I'm a big, big believer that SROs are positive in our schools, making sure that when schools are safe and just, you know, building a relationship with kids in the community about challenging pieces. And I think it's, we had some discussions, and I really felt like having the SRO in the school budget showed a true cost to what, you know, working three-quarters of their time in the school, we felt like this was the place for it to be. Over the course of the year, we added a substance abuse counselor at the middle school. Many of our students, whether it's themselves, or families, or siblings, we know that substance abuse can be a difficult thing. And again, another support that we partnered with Day One, which is a program that hires the counselors, and you work through some, some of their funding comes from billing. But making sure that that support is there for our students. And again, not about coming at substance abuse from a punitive, but more of a supportive role, and whether that's, you know, again, looking at from the use of, you know, our youth and vaping to any other substances, we felt that this was an important one. Over the last year, we have shared a homeless liaison between the three communities. We experience a huge amount of youth who are, whether it's couch surfing or eviction. We, right now, are probably dealing with forty to forty-five students in the Saco, and that's the ones we know about. And transportation and making stores, students can get to school. This year, that amount was funded by a grant from the state, and we've applied for another grant through the Gorman Foundation. So hoping that would get funded, but our share would be eleven-nine of that. Another piece that we've looked at adding into the budget is Burn School with five hundred and sixty-some-odd students had a social worker that was only four days a week, and making sure that we had a full-time social worker in that building. We've looked at, oops, sorry, teacher coursework. Teachers have the ability to take classes at the college level and have, instead of using some estimates, Jason's pulled some real numbers from this prior year, and that number increased seventy-nine thousand dollars. So there was some adds of four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in the budget. And obviously, there were some things that we decreased. And we looked at summer school, the money that from year to year that was put in there wasn't, hadn't been spent, looked at the superintendent's salary based off the combination of shared services, eliminated four unfilled ed tech positions, decreased some contracted services in nursing based off a student's needs and movement from district to district, decreased some IEP support. We felt like we could bring some money down on that end. And so there was about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of kind of decreases in that field. We also looked at, as we looked at, again, looking at SMS and the supports that we have for students. A few years ago, the Alternative Education Program was cut from SMS, and through talking with administration and some of the staff there, really felt like that was a program that is needed, and needed in our schools. So we're going to reallocate two of our staffs internally in the special ed department to look at creating that alternative ed situation. And then finally, looking at some of our special education program, as you know, that spaces can be a little bit tight in our elementary schools. Also, just looking at staff to student teacher ratios, and we would move our past program at Fairfield School and combine that with the program at Young School to have better, you know, be a little more efficient. Move the coast program from Young School to Fairfield School. And what this also would allow us to do is take our art and music programs at Fairfield School and actually give them a classroom back instead of a cart. They've been on a cart for several years, and, you know, if you're a teacher in that those positions, kids may not be getting everything they deserve in a programming because typically, you're limited to what will fit on that cart and move school to school. So we'd really like to try to do that for our staff. Now, that was the first draft of the budget, and certainly, as we move over months and as we learn more, we look at different pieces that are there.
Superintendent Ray, hold on one minute.
Sure.
Please continue.
Okay. Well, see, this is the slide that adds a little bit, so this one is like strategically, like you guys can't see the. So I'm not sure why the screen doesn't work on that slide, but it's over there. So you, Marshall, Marshall, you're just gonna have to squint just a little bit, and really, those aren't adds, those are minuses, but.
It is on the city website, you can access it through the agenda page.
Yeah, so we, as we move through the budget process, and again, each day, we learn more about our school department and the needs that we have, and through the process of the school committee reviewing the budget, certainly, there are a few things that they felt maybe should be added in. And the first that we would like to add, that, and again, this would be covered by just the two percent decrease in health insurance, so it's not really adding anything to what we're presenting here or what the city administrator presented, is a bus routing software that is very parent-facing, public-facing. One of the challenges that, you know, any of you who can get on Facebook the first week of school at like three o'clock, and you're realizing that things the first week of school don't always run smoothly, there's a new software that we've been looking at that would allow us to, one, push information from one screen. So if we know that bus ten is ten minutes late because of a boarding issue, we don't have to go to our software that calls parents and then figure out who's on bus ten. We don't have to then post it on Facebook or post it on Instagram or tweet it out. One click of the button within the software would be able to send push notification to Phil's phone that said, "Bus ten is ten minutes late, snap, done," which cuts down on phone calls to the office, phone calls to Jeannie. The other piece that it would allow a parent to do in real time is know exactly where their bus is. And so if I'm on the phone, if I have my phone with me, I can log on to the app with my child's information and realize that it's four minutes down the road. In the wintertime, which I think parents would, will love, is that you'll be able to set a notification in the menu that says, "My bus is ten minutes away, it's time to get out there and wait." It updates every two seconds, it talks about speed, it talks about routing. The other piece that it does for us is, you know, the job of a bus driver is challenging at best. This provides turn-by-turn directions so that if any one of you wants to go and get your CDL and decides to be a spare bus driver, you could get into that bus, and your route would be right there on a tablet, and all you'd have to do is sign in. Can you imagine being a spare bus driver and, or a sub bus driver and having a piece of paper and making sure that a kid gets off at the right stop? That's another important feature of that. And then finally, it would allow us to combine bus routes in minutes if there was an emergency at the end of the day or a lack of bus drivers, and those are, while updating parents where the buses are at. So that's one thing that we're adding. There's a lot of conversation at the state level about where Child Development Services is going to land, and while there's no money associated with this, we'd be looking of working contract with CDS to make sure that we have a certified special education teacher at our preschool. And then finally, one of the things that we begin to learn more about as we look at, and I thank you all for, that have visited, visited the buildings and any of them that, you know, still want to come out and look at SMS, is that we had a change in a custodial cost center in a position that was shared, and we've been able to reallocate some hours in certain positions. We looked at square footage at SMS, I mean, at the preschool center, and we had a part-time employee that was doing, working at the learning center and central office, and we've been able to shift hours around based off recommended square footage. And what we're requesting is adding a maintenance position. As a school department, we have one maintenance position for break fix. So that person works at nighttime, if they have four projects at four different schools, your eight hours is up pretty quick. And as we look at how we change the culture of how we take care of our buildings, because we're going to be going into a new building very soon, five years, we need to make sure that in ten years, we're not looking around and saying, "Hey, what happened here?" While it's only one person, we probably need two, but we need to make a priority that little things get taken care of quickly. That needs to be a priority for us. So these are all the things that we can do within our budget without adding a cent from what was presented to you. We actually would have a little bit of a decrease of where we are today. I'm not gonna, until we get those final numbers, I'm not gonna provide you with, you know, a down and then a down again. We'll get the right calculation. Now, as superintendent of schools, when you went through those budgeting priorities, and I see that number two, schools and infrastructure, that excites me a little bit. And so where we sit today, we're at a situation where, based off revenue from the state, where we're spending, we take care of the deficit. The tax increase, or the new tax dollars that we'd be looking at, is two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars or a point seven-seven percent. Now, that will, that number will go down a little bit with the health insurance piece. I always worry about new spending, and we're, you know, we are spending more here, but we use that subsidy wisely, and we've got a plan for the future. But all of you have kind of had the opportunity to tour SMS with us, and, you know, I think that when we, we've had some great conversations and, you know, from the school committee's side, working with you guys and looking at opportunities for additional support. I'm not standing here tonight asking for more staff. I'm asking you to consider looking at furniture and painting at SMS. Furniture is over forty years old. Marshall, I gave you numbers that were a little bit lower than this. I didn't fully understand, you know, what everything would cost, and two eighty might even be a little low. We're working on quotes for furniture that our stu. Painting, I was, is okay on, and I don't know that it will do the whole thing. But as we look, walk into our middle school, and we look at the furniture that is there for our students, Kevin sat in it, Nathan sat in it, I know Marshall said he was there. It's a situation that needs to be addressed. Our students need to think about walking into a classroom and having something that they're proud of to sit in, and that the edges of the corners aren't ripped off, and that when teachers walk by a desk and you catch the side of it, it doesn't rip your pants. We also need to, to think about that desks were designed for students to have a worksheet and a book forty years ago. Now we want our students working together and collaborating together. There is technology in their hands. If I'm a parent looking to come to this community and walk through the schools, I want to see a principal's office that doesn't have holes in the wall and seven different pieces of furniture that don't match. And so I look to you guys and to the school committee to think about how priority number two is our schools. We are working hard to deliver the new school to this community, and I think over the next couple of months, we're all going to be in some meetings to talk about site and what that, and what the program looks at. But we definitely know that Saco Middle School will be standing. I ask you to make that a consideration as you go through this budget. I know that there will be a lot of things that will be on the table, but this is an important one, and we're working really hard to get quotes on what it would look like for all teachers in that school to replace teacher desks, student desks, tables, and so that when we walk into the front office of our, of our schools, that a parent sees furniture that doesn't have corners taken out of desks and chairs that, you know, are forty-five years old. So I'm happy to present this budget to you guys. I want to thank principals, Jason, teachers who worked on this, everybody in the office. It was a different experience for everyone here of how we would try to be more detailed and put things out, and this is, you know, kind of building the foundation of where we're at. So as we look to move forward, come into a new school, look at programming for our students, make sure that we have the right sports, we can kind of start with something that we feel very strong about. So I would entertain any questions about the budget from you guys that I can answer tonight.
Any questions for Superintendent Ray? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Superintendent Ray. I guess I have a comment and then a question. You know, I just want to, just maybe for the public that's listening and for my fellow counselors, those SMS capital improvements at the end, the furniture estimate and the painting estimate, I mean, those might seem like minor issues, but if you've been through this school, there are holes in the walls. There are areas that have been damaged that haven't been repaired. There's just gross negligence in the building. And I have a kid at the middle school, maybe some people listening do too. And we expect these kids to come to school and act like young adults, to act like proper students, to behave well and come ready to learn, but we haven't provided them a building that shows that we take their education seriously, that shows that we respect them, that shows that we behave like adults in a mature and civilized society. And we can't expect them to behave well if we provide them a building with holes in the walls and mispainted, you know, not repaired, you know, floors and furniture that's literally falling apart and on its last legs. It's, right? They're going to rise to the situation that we provide them, and we haven't provided them with an adequate situation in which we can expect proper behavior out of them. And that being said, these are presented as one-time costs, and the furniture probably is. It's made it 45 years so far, and maybe it'll make it another 45 if we ask it to. But, but maintenance and painting probably aren't. I mean, these are ongoing costs, and I'm kind of wondering how that fits into your operation and maintenance budget and what piece is ongoing and what piece are one-time costs and how we address these kinds of concerns going forward.
So I'm going to try to give you the shortest answer that I can on this. But last year, when we kind of completed the budget process, we put half a million dollars into capital projects, which will allow us to replace the gym and library section of the Saco Middle School roof this year. Also in this budget, we have that same half a million dollars that will cover some of the revolving renovations fund in the next section of the roof, which springboards us into a third year to complete the roof, which is one more budget cycle out. And then that project, that half a million dollars, hopefully stays in the budget to continue to do these types of things. Now, at the same time that we have this piece, it doesn't mean I wouldn't be asking here again for a little something else, and I will caution all of us that in the future, we must resist the temptation during a tough budget year to look at capital because it puts us in the situation that we're in today. I would like to have another year to kind of look at of saying, "I don't believe that two maintenance individuals is enough." Because when you think about painting and walls, once we get a jump start and we are in a new building, that's probably where an employee fits really nicely just to stay up on all of those pieces. Now, at the same time, in three more budget cycles, as we think about this tiered layer for the roof and the other pieces of maybe keeping that half a million dollars just to stay up on top of things, we also have a situation where the totality lease will be coming to an end. And we probably will have one or maybe two school years that we have to think about where that programming sits before we move into hopefully a new school building that carries that programming. So when you look at those costs, Mike, there's also, also probably about another $400,000 there in operational expenses that are spent just on that building. So as you see the tiers of these kind of things as they fall down through, there should be no reason why we shouldn't be able to maintain using some of the existing funds and put it into capital projects. So if you can, I wish I had a slide built for that question because I could say, boom, here, here, and here. There are places where things will fall off that we need to be disciplined enough to say, "It goes back into buildings." Now, we know that we're going to have a school construction project that probably won't fix all of our problems. It's going to fix a large majority of them. We probably will look at local bond, there may be a local bond question on fixing some things. And so I think if we laid this money out that's in the budget and some of these, not one-time expenses, but recurring expenses, we can get to a place where it's fairly balanced and money still stays in that budget to do some of the other projects that we want to do. So that's the best answer I could give for it, give to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Ray? Council Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is more of a comment, but I still, when I met with you, what was it, three Wednesdays ago, I came to your school board member meeting, and I had mentioned that I'd like to have the school board consider this proposal. I still stand by that. And if the tax increase for the next fiscal year comes out to be, what, 16, 600,000, 619,197, I would still support that. So again, my comments that I made about sitting in these seats, I was looking for my own signature, signatures in the desk, all that still stand. And I do see this. I did speak with the superintendent when I was there, and we did talk about, well, what if we shifted like some, we only did some and not the other? But when you take all this pride to kind of make it anesthetically pleasing, you don't want to see some old desk and new desk. It kind of doesn't give you that shock value that I think that our students and teachers will need. I just believe just knock it all out in one fiscal year and then figure out maintenance down the road of how to replace them over time. Obviously, hopefully not in the first five years or so, but I still stand by possibly, if you consider to shift it into your budget rather than the council making a budget amendment, I think that for me is perfectly acceptable.
And I think, and I think some of this, Marshall, is just a little bit about timing too, because, you know, as we look at having an approved budget from the school department, which would be on the 12th, and what health insurance will do and what the other pieces will do. Again, I think there is also, what is important about this is from both elected bodies saying, "We need to do more capital-wise," and coming together on that sends an entire message to our community and to our staff and to our students to say, "We're serious." And that's why I see this as an opportunity for council and school committee's support around this. Yeah, doing half in one year, ah, how do, how do we pick which half of the school gets the new stuff? Ping pong balls, you know, like an NBA draft here? I think we need to take a large bite at that apple if we can do it and make it work between city and school budgets together. We're, we're together on this and everything impacts each other. And then continue to look at the processes we use on making sure we have enough personnel in the maintenance areas to keep up on the work. Can't expect one person to fix everything that goes on in our schools in a given nighttime, and I'll come back to you in the future saying, "And that shouldn't be, that person shouldn't be using their own personal vehicle to drive around the district. We've got to have the right equipment available for this person and individuals." And we're just going to continue to make steps. And, you know, at the same time, one of my jobs will be that if we can move in this direction is to make sure all of the other stuff goes away and doesn't hide in a storage closet somewhere, because that seems to be another little bit of a challenge that we have, is sometimes we hang on to a lot of stuff. I know that last year in the COVID and part of the moves, I, I'll just give a shout out to Carrie LaMoth, who was running burns at the time, and boy, she was making sure we were getting rid of old items and broken stuff, and we need to continue to do that at the school too.
Any further questions? Thank you, Superintendent Ray. So item four, city council and school board discussion. It's now open to the school board or the city council. School Board Chair LaFortune?
I don't have any questions or specific comments. I just wanted to say that I thought it was a really great opportunity that we had. I know I was on one of the tours that we went with a couple of school board members and some city council members. I know there were several others that occurred. Just being able to be in a setting for a specific topic like that and have sort of the collective, you know, witnessing of what we saw while we were there and to have some, you know, some really good discussion. I'm hoping that that's the first of many to come, that we do related to things that, where we will have mutual interests. You know, the building's specifically something that we share, and there is actually a document that the city and the, and the school department have that ultimately needs to be read, needs to be revisited and updated because it lacks, Five Wiley Road is not accounted for in there, and then there's some changes to some of the, you know, configurations of buildings that we don't have accounted for. So I'm just looking forward to us doing that some more, more than just the combined meetings like we're, like we're having this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo School Board Chair LaFortune's comments and to just acknowledge that I think the public schools are probably the way that most citizens interact with municipal government the most. It's our most public-facing aspect of government. We are, it's not schools versus municipality or the city. We are, we're one unit, and the school's success is the city's success and vice versa. And it was great to be on the tour and really get to emphasize that and think about that and work together on that. And as part of those discussions, there were some areas of maybe city, school, I don't want to call it conflict or tension, but perhaps a little bit of friction or areas where there's not as much collaboration as there could be. And some of those areas might be things like building maintenance or maintenance of outdoors or really where, what city responsibility and what school responsibility and even thinking about it in that way might get in the way of efficiencies and might get in the way of savings and might get in the way of perhaps a better public and student experience. And so I would welcome more opportunities like School Board Chair LaFortune just mentioned of revisiting some of these documents and revisiting some of these agreements and seeing where we can't find some synergies and ways to create both savings and better services for the public.
Any further discussion? Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, and that is item B, a final reading of Budget Amendment Number Six, Wage Adjustments, page 12 in your packet. That is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. The City of Saco approved the wage and compensation study in 2021. Since then, the HR department has worked to analyze existing wages and prepare recommended adjustments in line with the results of the wage and compensation scales. This budget amendment increases effective department lines to reflect wage changes for the remainder of the fiscal year. Be it ordered that the city council approve the second and final reading of the Budget Amendment Number Six, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the budget amendment for wage adjustments? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item C, a final reading, comprehensive plan adoption, page 14 in your packet. That is Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After more than a year of data collection, public meetings, and online engagement, the city's consultant has prepared a draft of Saco's updated comprehensive plan. Saco's comprehensive plan establishes the basis for making strategic city policy, project, and budget decisions by articulating a vision for the future and outlining the goals, objectives, and strategies to achieve it. It also provides the rationale and legal support for zoning, impact fees, and other regulations that guide or restrict development in the community. The planning board forwarded a positive recommendation of the draft plan with changes to the land use map and implementation matrix after holding public hearings on January 18th and February 1st. The next steps, following approval by council, the draft, the draft plan must be approved by the state before final adoption. The plan was organized to fulfill state requirements, so revisions resulting from state review should be minimal. Staff will present the final plan to city council for final adoption after completion of this step in approximately seven weeks. Be it ordered that the city council approve the proposed comprehensive plan, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Purdy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn to approve the comprehensive plan discussion. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just one comment. I love the document. I think it's well done. Kudos to all of the staff and public who put a lot of effort into it. I just, from, I just would like to suggest that the council pay attention to the lines seven, I'm sorry, pages 79 through 115 of the comp plan. You'll find a voluminous series of action plans designed to help the city implement the comp plan, which I fully endorse. I'm assuming that after spending tax dollars to create the plan, we intend to implement it to the best of our collective ability. And it's likely it's going to take years to do that, and that effort's going to be primarily orchestrated by our city staff. So I'm just suggesting that as we begin the budget process, we keep in mind the potential need to address additional staff funding to help start the process to move forward and, and to accomplish these goals gradually, year over year. That's just a point of reference that I'd like to share.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the comprehensive plan adoption? Seeing, oh, Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to acknowledge the comments made by Rick Millard earlier during the public hearing, chairman of our Shoreline Commission, a tireless advocate for our coastal waters and beachfront areas. And while I think there's strong aspects of this comprehensive plan that would protect our shoreline and advocate for our shoreline, I hope as we move forward, Saco and the city will take his comments seriously and acknowledge the important role that tourism plays in our economy and keep those aspects at the forefront of our development.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item D, one reading, Saco Island Multimodal Bridge Grant Funding Endorsement, page 15 in your packet. That's Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In late October 2020, the City of Saco, in coordination with Saco Main Street and the City of Bitterford, signed a contract with consultant Thornton Tomasetti to complete the Saco Island Multimodal Bridge Concept Plan for a proposed bridge across the Saco River, parallel to the railroad track connecting the Saco Transportation Center and Lincoln Street in Bitterford. Creating a connection between Saco and Bitterford in this area has been a long-term goal for both cities. The report determined that it is feasible to construct a bicycle pedestrian bridge at this location. Four alternatives were identified and presented in the final report. Based on the input from both city councils, it was decided to pursue the least expensive bridge option, the multi-span straight grider bridge. The estimated total cost for the project was estimated around $4,550,000 in the concept plan completed in July of 2021. In order to secure funding for the project, the municipalities are partnering, partnering to complete a federal earmark request, which is due on March 31st, and a RACE grant application due on April 14th of 2022. This grant would provide federal funding to complete the project by 2026. If successful, the grant would require a 20% match, 10% per municipality. Based on the estimate from July of 2021, the estimated total cost covering the coming years is approximately $400,000 to $500,000. However, in advance of submitting the earmark and grant application, this estimate will be updated to reflect inflation and the current market conditions. Staff recommends an endorsement from the council for the Saco Island Bridge, and I move to endorse the Saco Island Multimodal Bridge Project for funding through a federal earmark or RACE grant and a commitment to providing half of the, half of the commiserates match for the complete project by 2026, should the application succeed and the City of Bitterford also endorses the project.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? City Administrator Kainrath?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to chime in. So remember, we would be responsible for half of that match, so potentially $200,000, $250,000 or somewhere in that range. Really, this project for that amount of money is, I think, really good bang for our buck. So we are, we are working with Bitterford to pursue these grants and this federal earmark. The congressional delegation has already been brought up to speed on it. I think the reception was very positive. So we're looking for an endorsement here, I think, again, for $200,000 or $250,000 or somewhere in that range to this project. for $200,000 or $250,000, or somewhere in that range. Do this project would be incredible asset for the community.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree with City Administrator. I mean, I've supported the concept of this bridge for many years, and I, as I said a year ago, or thereabouts, I think this is a missing component of really tiring both communities together. So, I mean, I'm supportive of it. I don't generally like the idea of earmarks or supporting things without understanding where the money's coming from, but given this amount and the need, I think that, you know, I can go ahead and throw my hat on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. More, I'm trying to think, an interest of mine. This was, we were, we were provided two proposals, like Option A and Option B. Was, has that been chosen or not? I'm in for this. It's more just for my personal.
It was actually three options.
Three options.
It was like a small, medium, and large. So this would be the cheapest of the alternatives. So it would be the choice, I think it was option, I forget if it was one or three, but it was the least expensive of the options.
Is that the one with the small Bitterford Park, like small?
We have to go back and look at the presentation.
I haven't seen it for like a year.
But just know it's the cheapest option.
Okay, understood. Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Frugal, it's frugal.
Not the $8 million one.
Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to Item E, one reading, and that is to confirm the School Revolving Renovation Fund Program, page 19 in your packet, and that is Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 21st, council approved a first reading, Authorization of Funding Through School Revolving Renovation Fund Program, $771,020 grant, and a $756,054 bond at zero percent, zero percent interest. The order has been added to the city's website under the more section, under the more section of the March 21st Agenda Page. The full order was posted in City Hall on March 24th, and a summary of the order will be printed in the March 26 Portland Press Herald. The public has been noticed appropriately for the scheduled public hearings and final reading scheduled for April 11th. Be it ordered that the City Council confirm the School Revolving Renovation Fund Program timeline, I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion on this item, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you to the school board for joining us this evening and presenting your budget. That brings us to Item 10, New Business. Item A is a downtown parking study presentation, page 23. However, in accordance with rules, we are past 9:30. Is there any objection to continuing on? Counsel Archer? We will take a five-minute recess. Director Clavett, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for your time and patience at this hour. In August of 2021, the city signed a contract with StanTech to complete a downtown parking study. The purpose of the parking assessment was to gain a comprehensive understanding of downtown Saco's inventory, and to understand the current parking challenges of the overall parking network. Where are they located? Where are they, when are they occurring, and factors that contribute to the challenges in downtown? Through comprehensive data and analysis, this assessment identifies specific opportunities and solutions for Saco to consider for responding to current parking challenges. In February 2021, the consultant team presented key findings and recommendations from the final draft to the EDC, the Economic Development Commission, where the Economic Development Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the Saco City Council adopt the City of Saco Downtown Parking Study and substantially the form as presented. Tonight, you will hear a presentation on the draft downtown parking study. City staff has worked with StanTech to complete this draft plan, and is seeking additional feedback and comments from the City Council in advance of presenting the final plan sometime in April of 2022 for acceptance by the City Council. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Michael Clark, the project's lead from StanTech.
Welcome, Mr. Clark, and thank you for putting, standing two for three and a half hours, or three hours and 45 minutes.
I'll, I'll try to be brief but informative at the same time. So, we're excited to be here, nearly 10 o'clock, but still excited to be here, to talk a bit about the study and get some feedback from you guys. I'll skip past this slide, because I think Denise did a good job explaining what our objectives were. So, our study area for the downtown parking study, of course, encapsulated downtown. We also captured a lot of the immediately adjacent neighborhoods to the east and west of Main Street, as well as the entirety of Saco Island. So, the purpose of this is to capture the primary commercial activity center of the community, but not go further out to the point where we're looking at the community as a whole. We wanted a cohesive look at one confined area, so that's why we don't have things like the beaches in here. Our study goals were informed by recent planning efforts, like the Saco-Bitterford DOD study, as well as by the comp plan, which some of my colleagues at StanTech worked on. I'll touch on just Goals Two, Four, and Six in the interest of time. Our second goal, optimizing the use of the existing parking supply. As you'll see in a moment, our inventory and utilization exercises for this study found that there is a lot of parking in the community today that goes unused during the peak time, and oftentimes, just by tapping into that supply before we build new parking, it's a very cost-effective way of facilitating residential, commercial growth in the community without burdening developers or the community as a whole with the cost of constructing new parking. This fourth goal here, establishing parking precedence to better align long-term development with city goals, is in much of that same vein. We will be going over some stakeholder feedback in a few minutes, and one of the things that we heard from that stakeholder feedback was that there is demand for development, but if there needs to be any type of off-site parking built, especially for some of the residences, the residential neighborhoods to the west of Main Street, that does act as a hindrance on supporting that growth. Parking is oftentimes used as a reason to not develop residential or commercial properties, and in most, perhaps almost all instances, you know, the parking exists in a way in the community that can accommodate growth like this. This last goal, ensuring that the parking system is accessible and navigable to residents and visitors, this is all about information. So when I come up from Boston and I come into Saco, and it's a busy day, and I can't find parking, and I don't know where to go to find parking, and I can just keep driving in the Bitterford, that's not a great outcome for the city. We want to make a system that is really easy to understand if you have never been to the community, or if you have been and are simply looking to do something new. So, we'll go through our study activities. Our first set of activities when we began this last August were to create a parking inventory, which was mapped in GIS, profile the parking utilization through a couple of counts that we collected in late August, as well as capturing parking turnover. We set up a time-lapse camera in Perperal Square. This isn't included in this presentation, but it is in the draft report, which is in your packet. So, what does our inventory tell us? When we collected our utilization, we also field verified all of our inventory, as well as brought this to numerous stakeholders within the city that we'll get to in a few moments, to kind of verify that some of this information is accurate. You can see, there's not a whole lot of public parking in the community today. So we have most of our public parking along Main Street, in Perperal Square, some of the unregulated parking along Middle Street and Cuts Avenue. There's not a whole lot of off-street lots, especially for a community like this. We would see in a lot of peer communities that there would be off-street lots to accommodate people parking, you know, without a destination in mind, or they just want to get to a parking lot because that's where they're comfortable with. Here in Saco, we have the free street lot, we have the City Hall lot that, of course, is used during business hours, and we have the Transportation Center, which can feel a little bit disconnected from Main Street and downtown. The public parking that is present in Saco that is not unregulated is primarily two hours in length, so if I need to park for longer than two hours, I can't do it on Main Street. There's also quite a bit of limited wayfinding to the public parking that exists in the community today, at least from an outsider's perspective. One of our favorite activities on the study was taking pictures of all of the signs of parking in the community today. There is an abundance of regulations, and by that I don't mean 15-minute parking here, an hour there, two hours there. It's mostly two hours throughout the downtown area. What I mean is that when I walk by a lot, I can see a sign that says, "This is parking for customers of this, this, and that only," or there's no sign, and I don't know if I can park there or not. So, with our inventory, we've classified a lot of off-street lots as being reserved or for customer only, and that these lots are much more prevalent than public parking. And the issue with this is that even if you've lived here for a while, it can be difficult to kind of discern, if I park in a customer-only lot for a business and I go there, but then I do four other things, am I putting myself at risk of getting towed? Or if I want to do the four other things first and then do that, am I putting myself at risk? That's if somebody lives here. If you don't live here and you don't really have an agenda in mind, that can be very limiting to where, where you can find parking. Our utilization, we collected on a Thursday and a Saturday in late August. Traditionally, we see a peak in the community typically on a weekday around 12:00 PM. That's when most people are downtown, and then you have shopping and dining kind of at a midday peak there. We didn't exactly observe that in Saco. The utilization was pretty consistent throughout the course of this Thursday, at around 40%. On Saturday, the peak period was at 6:00 PM. It was a little less, at 37% throughout the study area. We certainly do see some instances where there is a higher degree of utilization. We've boxed out that downtown core on the map on the right-hand side there. Main Street, Perperal Square, you can see the Savings Institution Lot has the purple color, meaning that it is quite utilized. So, we're seeing some spaces that are pretty well utilized, but also a lot of lots that are sitting nearly empty. We did have access to some historical counts from the city from January 2017 and July 2013. I know it might be a little bit difficult to read with the slide, but the August 2021 counts are higher than what we're seeing in the winter, which is what we would expect, but they were lower than what were observed in 2013, which also was not that surprising. That's probably the COVID impact coming into play with last year. So, as I just said, this utilization tells us that prime spaces downtown can be very busy, but most other parking goes unused, off-street lots. Saco Transportation Center has examples of that. Some of our other study activities, public outreach was a key component of this effort, our public survey, as well as some roundtables and committee meetings. Our public survey was open throughout October 2021. It was made available through the city's website, posted on social media. Paper copies were available at City Hall. We had 73 total responses. The findings did not surprise us, given what we had kind of surmised from the inventory and from the utilization. We're finding that a lot of people are able to find a parking space quickly, that they're not identifying many perceived significant barriers to finding parking downtown. We find that half of respondents were comfortable parking near their destination instead of directly in front, which provides some degree of comfort, that we don't always need to be providing parking right at the destination for people. But maybe that second finding is the most important one here, where only a small number of the respondents said that they utilized those spaces that were dedicated for specific users. Many of those reserved lots, those customer lots, people who took this survey that you might expect are pretty savvy with the parking system today because they're Saco residents. They're not using those lots for the most part. We also held a number of community stakeholder meetings, well, not community stakeholder meetings, stakeholder meetings with, you know, the Economic Development Commission, Historic Preservation Committee. As the draft report was made available in mid-January, we solicited a questionnaire through the Economic Development Staff and received 12 responses. It's a great level of feedback. I want to highlight especially that October 19th meeting with the business stakeholders that Saco Main Street's helped facilitate. We had some really great findings from that discussion. We heard from a lot of merchants who are saying that they have a lot of difficulty in telling customers where they can park, and that causes a degree of stress. We have some merchants say that they lease spaces from other lots. We have some merchants who just direct people to a lot that they know, you know, isn't actively monitored. If I had to pick a term for it, it seemed like it was a lot of polite mayhem that was going on with these merchants. Everybody was very kind about it, but there was a distinct degree of disorganization with regards to determining where employees parked, where customers could park. Some other findings here, longer-term parking spaces are needed, especially for employees, and that there's a support for increasing density, especially for new residences on the west side of Main Street, but, you know, this perception that there just isn't available parking hinders those efforts. efforts. I don't want to spend too much time on this slide. This is a quick modeling effort. The blue box on the map there is supposed to signify a five-minute walk from Main Street, from the river up through City Hall, and this is a modeling exercise. Exercise that we do for our parking studies that uses assessor database data, the land uses in this blue box, and tries to estimate the, what we would expect demand to be compared to what we actually observe demand to be compared to, you know, the supply of parking in this area. And long story short is, you know, we could add 250 vehicles to this blue box today at the peak period, which in this model is early afternoon, and not need to build a new parking space. And certainly, off-peak, you know, especially for something like a residence, which, you know, doesn't share a peak with almost any other land use except maybe restaurants later in the night, there's a significant capacity for parking just in the community today to accommodate growth in those areas. So our final activities here were to draft strategies and assemble a final plan. I'll spend a little bit more time on the first three strategies, and then we'll get through the rest more briefly. This first strategy is pretty straightforward. It's simply to just add to the on-street parking supply. So we noticed that these streets west of Main Street, Cuts Ave, maybe to a lesser extent Cuts Avenue, but more Pleasant Street and Store Street, they're two-way streets. It's a 20-foot right-of-way. If you're traveling down that street and there's not a car coming at you from the other direction, you can pick up a pretty fair pace of speed on a street like that. That's not very appropriate for a residential neighborhood. So if we were to stripe half of that street for parking and make it one-way, which way that street goes was not a focus of the study. You certainly would need to kind of evaluate the circulation a little bit more before enacting an idea like this. But you're able to create a lot of parking, as well as comp traffic on some of these streets. So it adds several dozen spaces, adds nearly 100 spaces to the supply if you were simply to just stripe a lot of the two-way streets today as one-way and add that parking. And as we said, with the residential growth and the concern about, you know, being able to accommodate growth in off-street parking supply with, you know, new residential, if you're adding spaces to the streets, that space that can be, that can absorb some of that growth that occurs in these neighborhoods and really help limit the expansion of the off-street supply. The graphic on the bottom right-hand corner, it's just a very quick rendering of like what a parking lane and a travel lane on Pleasant Street could look like. You can see that you have that buffer between the sidewalk and the traveling vehicle with a parked car. You have some paint on the street. Certainly, some of these streets need some, well, you could say that they need some sidewalk work with the curb, so it certainly, you know, requires some degree of investment, but certainly a significant improvement over the current condition. Our second strategy is to improve the efficiency of the existing parking supply. I want to use this example on the screen here as a hypothetical. We don't know the exact circumstances of these four lots. It's really just as an example, but if we were to take these four lots between Store and Water Street behind Main Street, today, those are four divided lots, 87 separate spaces. Some of these lots are in a degree of disrepair. You have, you know, different entrances. I'm sure they're regulated in many different ways. You might have customer parking in one, unregulated in another. What is suggested with this strategy is simply to consolidate lots like this. By taking away some of that land that is used for the edge of each parcel, you're able to find 26 spaces in this specific instance. And by redesigning this lot and consolidating the parcels, you're also able to introduce a number of efficiencies by clarifying the curb cuts, which is great for pedestrians. The fewer curb cuts there are, the better, the better the safety for the pedestrian is, introduce some landscaping, pedestrian access. I understand that the logistics of doing something like this appears difficult, especially if it's four lots, maybe compared to two somewhere else in the community, but this is something that communities have been doing. It's not too challenging to initiate something like this. You're able to retain the ownership for the four separate lot owners in this instance. They're just being able to capture the efficiencies of a shared parking supply here. And as we mentioned with that first strategy, if you're able to couple this with reduced off-street parking requirements, you're able to kind of tie in some of these new spaces to accommodate some of that growth. So this third strategy can also kind of help address maybe making that second strategy come more into reality here, which is to create a framework for a shared parking district. So this creates a lot of simplicity regarding where to find parking as a visitor and allows for lot owners to benefit from sharing supply. So there's three phases here. I'll go through them briefly. This first phase is fairly simple. It's simply a publicly facilitated approach. So if I have a business on Main Street and I need spaces for five employees, I might see the lot next door to me that's sitting empty and decide that I want to approach that lot owner and see if I can lease some spaces from him or her. That can take a lot of time. Maybe it's really difficult to get in touch with that owner. Maybe they don't care and they're never going to initiate. This is some of the things that we heard during that merchant meeting where, you know, it's really a hodgepodge of understanding who owns what. The city in this instance could serve as kind of the facilitator there and broker, you know, these private agreements between two parties, one looking for parking and one possessing parking, and really provide a degree of protection to those parties by formalizing agreements and keeping them on record at City Hall. So instead of a lot of the legwork falling upon the merchant, the city is facilitating an approach that allows these two parties to connect with one another. A second approach is a more formalized public-private partnership. So as are related to that second example, in this instance, the city would provide in-kind services to lot owners who share their supply for more general usage. So maybe when we're talking about consolidating a couple of lots together, the city's throwing in some money for making that construction a reality, or maintaining the lot in the long term, or plowing. You know, these are the types of in-kind services that, in exchange, you can create more public supply. And again, I know that that's a cost to the city, but compared to the cost of, you know, building a new parking lot from scratch, it's actually economical for the city to explore this type of, this type of option. This third phase is very long-term. It involves permitting, revenue sharing. This would be recommended when you have a pricing mechanism in place. Would not recommend that the city consider pricing at this point in time. There's just not the demand for it. But under this system, which many communities across the country have realized, have, you know, the pricing structure is shared between the community, the lot owner, and also reinvested back into the downtown area. It's an ambitious long-term goal. So these last few strategies, four, five, and six, plan for high-activity events. One of the things that we heard from the merchants was a lot of concern, especially for something like Pepperell Square closing down for an event and being able to accommodate people who want to park. Having a more formalized process in place that says, you know, when we're shutting down Main Street, you know, folks are going to be able to park over here and maybe get shuttled in, or, you know, we're able to park at, you know, the church for today only because we've come to an agreement with their, with them. This type of planning in advance would address a lot of the concerns of merchants in terms of being able to accommodate, you know, sustained traffic over the course of their day. I had this experience a few weeks ago. We were on vacation in Campopon, a street festival in a neighborhood that we want to go in, and instead of figuring it out, we just turned around and left because we didn't want to deal with parking. That's the type of thing that isn't good for a community. This fifth strategy is to improve the multi-modal environment within downtown and between downtown Saco and Saco Island. So when I mentioned earlier that there's quite a bit of capacity in Saco Transportation Center, the lots there, that's where you can actually park for longer than two hours. But you can see in the picture here, that's a desire line on the east side of Main Street. It's really an indication to a pedestrian that this is not a place for them, even though, you know, pedestrians are clearly walking there. So improving the environment within the downtown area, everybody who parks becomes a pedestrian at some point in time. It is of importance for a parking system. And the sixth strategy, to invest in a comprehensive branding and parking wayfinding system. I would encourage that to be more folded into a larger branding effort, not just be for parking, but again, this is just simply about sharing the information that you have about where people can go and find parking. Seven strategies to monitor and adjust system performance over time. Right now, with utilization around 40%, 50%, if anything, you could probably lengthen the amount of time that you have on some of these signs because somebody staying for four hours isn't likely to, you know, prevent somebody else from finding a space at some point in there. But over time, you can monitor the system, just do some quick counts, maybe twice a year, take some morning, some of these high-activity areas like Main Street and Pepperell Square. And as you approach higher and higher degrees of utilization, maybe 70%, 80%, 90%, the key is we want to be able to have a parking system that has availability. When I pull up, I can park there. If I have to pay, that's fine, but at least I know that I can park there. Once you get to demand levels at that, at that level, that might be an indication that you want to think about pricing or finding some other incentivization to better shift parking around. Our eighth and ninth strategies are to incorporate accessible parking spaces in line with state recommendations, and that ninth strategy to address snow emergency parking ban procedure, which we didn't go into too much detail in the study, but I'll relate that back to the shared parking district in-kind services. You know, this is an instance where the city might be able to plow a private lot in exchange for allowing people to park there during a snow emergency. And some of the feedback that we got when the draft report was shared with stakeholders back in January on the screen here, improving the efficiency of the existing parking supply, comprehensive branding and wayfinding, planning for high-activity events, those are some of the ones that, you know, rated favorably well among folks. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. No questions. Thank you very much for your presentation. Director Clavett, anything further?
My laptop, that's it.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us, that completes New Business, brings us to item 10, excuse me, item 11, Administrative Updates. City Administrator Kenrath.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of very brief updates. We have two RFP opportunities I just want to announce. First, the City of Saco seeks proposals from collection agencies for supplemental collection services on outstanding city bills. Proposals will be accepted until April 29 at 4:00 p.m. Please email Glennis Salas, gsalas@socamaine.org. Proposals must include responses to all requirements contained within this RFP in a PDF labeled "Agency Name: Collections RFP Response." Any questions regarding this project should be directed, directed again, to our Finance Director Glennis Salas. Secondly, we have an additional RFP proposal. The City of Saco seeks proposals from qualified vendors to conduct a community satisfaction survey capable of meeting bid specifications. Proposals will be accepted until April 21 at noon. Please email Emily Roy, our Human Resources and Communications Director, at eroy@socamaine.org. And proposals must include responses to all requirements contained within this RFP in a PDF labeled "Saco: A Community Satisfaction Survey." Please contact Emily Roy with any further questions by calling 207-710-5002. Lastly, just a quick update, Diamond Riverside Park. We are going to be doing some significant upgrades down there this spring, including a new boat ramp, dock, signage, benches, creation of a trail in the recently cleared-out area, as well as reseeding and plantings in that area as well. So this is a great spot that's often, I think, undiscovered by many in our community. It's great access to the Saco River for kayaking or other recreational water activities, and especially after the spring, it's going to have a whole new look, so we encourage all citizens to go check it out and make use of Diamond Riverside Parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Council discussion and comment tonight? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been reflecting on some of the comments during our public comment period regarding integrity and morality and motives of council members. I'd like to remind the public that these are largely volunteer positions. I'm not sure whether sitting on city council actually costs me money, but it certainly doesn't make me any. You know, I've been sitting in this chair for, I don't know, close to four hours now. I'm going to go home. I'm going to have less than eight hours until I wake up to go to work again, and the only thing I get for that is the ability to serve my community and make a positive impact on those around me. I assume the same is true for the other six councilors and the mayor. It's inevitable that we will disagree on some issues. That's why we need seven people to take votes. If we all saw things the same way, we could have a unitary executive as opposed to a council. But to suggest that somebody who disagrees is somehow not serving with morality, or not serving ethically, or not serving to the best of their abilities to do what's right for Saco, frankly, is a little bit insulting, and it takes our dialogue to a dangerous level. Instead of working together for common solutions, we find ourselves retreating into corners, or taking sides, or forming alliances that don't serve the best interests of the city, but instead serve to protect our political interests and/or our political allies. And in the end, it's the citizens of Saco that lose in those kind of debates. So I really hope, I'm meeting with, you know, Save Saco Neighborhoods group this weekend to try and have a productive dialogue, but I hope that when people come and talk to council and when council goes out and talks to people, we remember that we're all here for what's best for Saco, and that we ratchet some of the name-calling and some of the calls for ethical behavior down. There's nobody here who's doing anything else. When we disagree, we're disagreeing honestly, and when we make decisions, we're all trying to make them for what's best for the city. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Any further council discussion and comment this evening? Seeing no further council discussion and comment, that brings us to item 13, there's no executive session. Item 14, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion on adjournment? Roll call vote to adjourn, Council, uh, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to adjourn at 10:19 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.